And then. Try to. Reach some consensus on what a preferred land use alternative would look like. Based on, based on the data we have at this point. Then we'll move on to housing and economic development. These are topics we haven't dealt into in quite so much detail. So we're hoping the conversation on those is more on the level of what we had last time on. The climate element will be presenting some first draft. Goals and policies and looking for councils can put on those. Alright, so this first information here should sound familiar to most of us, although we do have some new faces in the room. And I guess before I go any further, we're missing not introducing our project team here from WSP. Marty Smell and Alec Agarola with us here this evening. Alright, so moving into. What, what we're planning for in terms of land use and sort of. Moving into housing and economic development from there. So as we've been through, we're required along with all jurisdictions in Clark County to. Review and update our comprehensive plans in accordance with the Growth Management Act. So we're in, in the midst of that process. And what we're looking at for land use is. Not just planning to accommodate. The total population, housing and jobs we have been allocated as a city in urban growth area over the next twenty years. But really, the, the trick here is we are kind of the first, in the first cohort of jurisdictions. Being asked to plan for units affordable to different income levels. Which really adds another layer to our numbers. If we were just looking at gross population and housing, we'd be set. We have enough capacity for that. But when you add in the factor of units being affordable to different income levels, we're looking at a really significant. And the chart here is kind of one way to cut the data. It's basically showing, you know, the, the larger bars are in those income bands under eighty percent of area median income. And the housing types assigned to this sort of assumes that zoning is our only tool. And we've talked about this before. It's, it's the first tool. So, you know, using different incentive tools, you can make multiplexes, duplexes, triplexes affordable to those lower income bands. But looking at zoning only, that's sort of the relationship between income band and housing types. And shows that a lot of our need as a city and as a, an urban area are in addressing availability to those. Lower income bands. So last time we talked, we had narrowed our land use scenarios down to two options, basically. And the first of those options showed. A number of expansions to our urban growth area. And those were requests that came to the county from those property owners saying, hey, we are interested in our properties being included in the urban growth area. Please include this in your analysis. And as a city, we, we supported the property owners in, in that request, saying yes. We should take a look at all of these expansion requests adjacent to our existing UGA. Treat them as valid requests and analyze how that would affect our growth plans for the next twenty years. The second alternative we looked at really focused at two of those expansion requests and made more modifications. In the existing urban growth area, and those two requests, and we will look at maps after this. That the second option focused on where the mall property to the south of Ridgefield, kind of an island surrounded by urban growth. And then the northern industrial urban reserve area to the north of the city, just west of I five. Which is in an industrial reserve overlay. We have kind of throughout this process been looking at that as a potential expansion area to accommodate. Not just that employment, those employment uses, but through, through a mixed use overlay housing as well, particularly. Affordable units in that area. So what has changed since last time is that. As of December, Clark County Council had directed their staff to move forward with. An area wide resource lands analysis, which is basically an analysis that looks at. Particularly ag land throughout Clark County and analyzes. Okay, what, what does it mean if? Any of that land is converted through growth area expansions. Oh, I should step back a half step and remind the council that all of the UGA expansion requests are on ag land. So resource land.
Because that is what we are surrounded by. Not because that's what somehow we magically were after. It's not magically what people requested. It is because the city of Ridgefield UGA is almost one hundred percent surrounded by agriculturally zoned. Resource land.
So recently, with new county counselors on their. On their council, the, the direction shifted a bit and they have backed off that resource land. Without having. A countywide resource land analysis. It really increases the challenge of. Looking at those expansion areas and making an argument for those properties to be de-designated and come into the UGA. So.
Before you leave that.
Yes.
So just kind of the clarity on that is, growth management says. The county is responsible for determining whether land should be zoned for farming. And whether it's not appropriate anymore. And that's called de-designation. So de-designating farmland is simply saying it's not suitable for long-term commercially significant farming activity. So that's a process and that's the first step that has to happen when they are looking at a piece of land. As to whether or not that property owner who, who requested to be considered for being brought, being brought into a city, whether it's even appropriate. So they have to do that work first. When they're doing that work, they have to go beyond a single piece of land. And they have to look at the entirety of farmland around Clark County and analyze it, look at it, say, alright, well, what is farming? In Clark County, what is long-term commercially significant farming in Clark County? That's this resource land study that has to be done under Washington law. To then have the conversation about any of these property owner requests that came into the county. That were requested by the county.
And not to mitigate the decision to back off of that, but wasn't there argument that there wasn't going to be enough time to do a thorough study?
So they, that is one argument that the county has raised. The county requested proposals for a resource land study. They received proposals that met the timelines that they had set. There, certainly people would have to ask the county counselors as to what their specific and individual reasoning was as to why. They thought it was better to not do the resource land study. But for the purposes of all the property owners that had been requested by the county to tell them what they wanted, all of those property owners around Ridgefield. Because they are currently zoned at, whether it's farmed or not, whether it's been farmed for fifty years or not. Doesn't matter. If it's not included in this kind of study, then we're hemmed in at that point in what we can do. Because the county makes that decision. City council does not have the authority to make that decision, only the county council.
Alright, so back to where we're at with our land use scenarios. This change in direction backing off of the resource lands analysis really made us pause and say, okay, you know what? We, we need to look at a no expansion option and play out that scenario. To have that basically as, as a plan B for Ridgefield. And so that's what we're going to be showing you here. So the table in front of you is sort of a high level comparison of what we're now calling maximum expansion. That's the one council seen before with all the adjacent UGA expansion requests included. Limited expansion, which is the version with just those two expansion areas, the northern investor reserve and the mall properties. And then no expansion again, this, this option is playing out, okay, what would we have to do? Inside our existing city limits and UGA to accommodate the growth. That we have been allocated without any expansion whatsoever.
And that's key, the growth we have been allocated. Again, city council does not have the authority to say no to more people, more units of housing. Accommodating the income strata that we are required to. The state creates statewide requirements, the county is the keeper of those requirements and they allocate. That population to the cities. So again, it is the county council that decides who takes how much for allocation of people, population. In each city. So those are the two key pieces that make a difference in what you're seeing now is. Are you going to expand or not? That is a county council decision. And taking, how many people do you have to take? That's the county council saying, whether you change the boundary or not, this is how many people you're taking.
Cause they're, sorry. So the, the decision making by the county on the, the land space, are there any other cities that have been impacted to the degree? That we have, based on that.
The cities that are most impacted are the ones that are primarily surrounded by the ag zone land. So ourselves, La Center, Battle Ground a little bit, Camus a little bit, are the ones that have been impacted by. That would be impacted by the county deciding to not even consider expansions for those cities. Cause Washougal is probably more like Skamania, right? Like their outskirts. Yeah, I also don't think they had much that they were like. Yeah, they're in the gorge on the east, they've got hills on the north, they got a river on the south, and Camus on the west. Not a lot of room.
What do we have available within our current boundaries to develop, produce what we're expecting?
So we're, we're going to go through all of that. That is a great question and that is exactly what we want to walk through with you.
I, I think it's important to note, and maybe you can clarify this, Claire, Steve. The, the county asked for all, all of those site-specific requests, right?
Yes.
And so they got out of that hundred and eighty or something like that? Hundred thirty-three across the entire county. And we got a good chunk of those around our UGA, right? But then what they're now saying is they're not going to study those, so they asked for them. They got a whole bunch of people to submit them, but now they're saying they will not study them?
Correct.
Okay.
And that takes all one thirty-three off the table. Correct. Well, no, I shouldn't say that. Okay, the one hundred and thirty-three site-specific requests were not all farm zone properties. Okay. So it takes out all of the ones around us because those are all zoned for agricultural purposes, whether or not they're used for that. Isn't the point. It is, that's what their zoning is. So because they're zoned that, they're out of conversation. There are some that were requested of the one thirty-three that were not farm zone properties. Those can continue forward at least to be analyzed because they don't need that resource land study. The connection between that study and the impact on the cities and on the people. That had been requested to give their opinion, that connection is key.
And that includes our original two, the northern one, that mall property.
Correct. Yeah, we'll walk through, we'll show as well.
So do we have any recourse at all?
There's, so no formal action has been taken on a comprehensive plan map. An alternatives map by the county. But the clock is ticking on any analysis that's necessary prior to their adoption of a plan. If they do not take the appropriate steps in their analysis, prior to adopting a plan, there is an opportunity to appeal that plan. And private property owners. And you know, representatives of a variety of interest groups and cities have the authority to appeal.
But that, so doesn't that essentially kind of pigeonhole us into no expansion then, if they're not going to study it and they have to study it in order to do?
There is still time to do the study. So if council, after this conversation, comes to a point where you as a council say no, our preferred alternative, our vision. For the city. Is different than what the county is trying to prescribe. Then it is up to you as a council to then take that to the county council and help them understand better. The implications of their actions on the vision that you and this community want. If it is different than that, and though there is time for that conversation. I think it would be something that would be a necessary conversation between the elected officials.
I, council, I think probably it's worth as, as we're doing this, I think that regardless of what the county has said or whatever, regardless of whatever. Requirements are on us, I, I really think that we need to look at this as what's the best vision for our community and approach it from that standpoint. Regardless of, of that, because we, you know, if we don't, then we're just going to end up with a plan that lacks vision. And doesn't really serve the people of this community and our growth that's anticipated over the next ten, twenty years. So as we're going through this, I, that's, that's kind of how I'm going to look at it. I'd, I'd encourage you guys to look at it the same way too, just our, our, our community first, so.
So this might help a little bit, Director Lust started to work on these assumptions page. Kind of a few key pieces, and you can see it in the bolded areas, and Director Lust is already starting to go through that. As this conversation that we've been having, how does that impact these assumptions? So when you look at greater, so if you look at the second row, we look at a less mixing of affordable housing in RLD zones. Now, RLD is low density, that's, you know, a low density, single-family residential neighborhood. This is six units per acre, it's four units per acre, it's eight. These are the neighborhoods, we have a lot of these neighborhoods, probably eighty percent at least of our neighborhoods in Ridgefield. So when we say mixing of affordable housing in RLD zones, you can see on the no expansion. When you see greater mixing of affordable housing, go down toward the bottom where it says most rezone and density increases. More redevelopment, more to ADUs. In the no expansion alternative, the math to get, you have to fit. Two thousand, two hundred and sixty-six new units of housing, not people, new units of housing. Into our existing boundary in the no expansion alternative. The only way you do that is by adding density in the existing boundaries. So you're adding people to existing neighborhoods. So when we say more redevelopment, we're talking twenty-five percent of existing. Areas, existing neighborhoods in Ridgefield redeveloping. Thirty percent of the neighborhoods in Ridgefield adding an accessory dwelling over the next twenty years. That is the level of intensity that you have to. Use to make the math work to take the population that is being required by the county in the area that they are saying we have.
So you'd have to take a, a neighborhood that has already been developed. And when you say redevelopment, you're saying you have to revisit what the density for that part, like that section of town is? Is that what you're saying?
Site by site, lot by lot, neighborhood by neighborhood.
Or would it be like a code amendment that just allows ADUs?
I guess already allowed them. So ADUs are already allowed. ADUs are allowed in all residential zones. But what we, but we don't assume a relatively high percentage of those because ultimately, that has not been the vision of the city. City council, our residents, that has not been the market in Ridgefield. So generally, things get built because there is a market for them. In this case, it wouldn't just be market, you would be forcing that expectation.
Can I ask if there's a, a difference in impact to taxpayers per development? It's a plan?
It's a good question. I don't know how, so when you say an impact to taxpayers for property taxes or sales tax, those kinds of things?
Putting all those neighborhoods, like adding all those extra things into a space that already exists, like would that shift things for people favorably negatively?
So it depends. It would kind of be neighborhood by neighborhood. One of the things that you would look at is, is the infrastructure already developed in a way that can accommodate. A redevelopment or intensification of use. Could you add ADUs and duplex and triplex on the existing street? Or is there more work that would be necessary? What are the impacts to that pavement? Are you going to need to do more work on that? Do you have the adequate base of water sewer? Like, there is less expense to having water and sewer lines already in place. And redeveloping an area that already has water and sewer lines. But only if they're sized appropriately and if they can accommodate that. So it's hard to answer. There's pros and cons associated with kind of that impact. What we're not showing you on this slide at least is the impacts on job production. Is that the no expansion alternative also takes out about a thousand jobs. So, so by not expanding, we're also losing about a thousand jobs. Compared to limited expansion, sorry, compared to limited expansion. So that's another kind of from a taxpayer standpoint, the more jobs, the more employers we have, the lower our tax rate gets. It's one of the great things about Ridgefield is as we've grown, the tax rate, our actual property tax rate. It's the lowest in the county and it's kept going down. It's because we keep spreading out the, the property tax that is collected and for each person's share.
Well, and I was going to say, like, it, it, when you're rezoning, you know, it's going to have, have impact your assessed value as well. So, you know, it'd be hard to predict exactly.
So are we literally saying, for instance, wishing wells, which is what, a half acre lots now? So you could take your lot at Wishing Wells and you could build three or four additional houses on your lot?
So not currently. Now, the county's, the county's assumptions, when they did a vacant and buildable lands model analysis for Ridgefield. Showed the redevelopment of Wishing Wells. Now, what we also know though is that there are CCNRs in place, there are covenants and restrictions. In some neighborhoods that restrict the ability to subdivide, to add more people and have more houses on the same lots. But we also know that that subdivision code is at the state level. There, there is a state law that is specific to subdivisions that have CCNRs, HOAs. So for those, the last time the state got involved, they got involved to get rid of the ability of HOAs to have restricted covenants. That were discriminatory, and so they changed that area of state law. They have the authority and the ability to change state law to preclude HOAs from stopping people from doing that. So if we are, if the state is telling us and the county is telling us that we must assume this redevelopment. In our existing boundaries, then based on the actions that have already been taken by the legislature and the county council. Like it's reasonable to assume that them taking further action to not allow HOAs to, to stop people. From adding houses, that could occur in the future. It doesn't, it's not the case now in current law.
And Stephanie in the Clinton Talk report this morning, it came in the mail, it was something about splitting lots and, you know, I don't know if that's passed. She said it had passed out of the house, right, but not necessarily out of the Senate, so.
Yeah, there's a bill, there is a piece of legislation to require. To prohibit local governments from saying no to lot splitting.
Yeah.
Which has been, we've seen more of that from the legislature, just kind of top down. And that doesn't, that bill wouldn't affect us at this time because the population threshold is above where we are. But at some point as we grow, it would.
Okay.
But I guess to build on, Councilor Chipman's example of wishing wells, it, it wouldn't, obviously it's not just good enough to say, oh, well, those people can. Build an ADU or, oh, well, none of them did, I guess that's how it goes. Like, that's not good enough in this. It would, we would have to incentivize it in some way, shape or form for them to actually. Put in the ADUs or do lot splitting or whatever.
There is certainly a consistency requirement between cities and the county with regards to our plan and how we are creating it. As well as implementation pieces, and again, that has been more, there has been more coming from Olympia. On more top-down prescriptive accountability measures that they are going to be and are putting in place to assure that we are decreasing. That the deficit of affordable housing, that if we don't, that there would be consequences associated with that.
So it feels like every new. Area that we approve then, we would end up approving very small lots in every single thing that we. I mean, yeah, we just went through this deal about what size lots to be and have, right, and this part off of Cardi Road. So it seems like if they're going to push this many houses on us into property we already have, it would be, everything would be very small.
That's probably, that's a great segue into kind of the next piece of this then. Any other questions though on the assumptions page? Okay, so why don't we go into that, to the maps, yeah, because then that kind of will show you more about what it would look like.
So the first two maps we're going to look at are ones you have seen before. Rebranded to frame them in terms of different levels of expansion. So this maximum expansion map is the alternative we've been looking at throughout this process. That honors all of those UGA expansion requests adjacent to the existence, existing boundary. So one going kind of from twelve o'clock clockwise, one, eight, nine, ten and three A. So that's, and on this map, that is where a lot of growth is being accommodated, not all of it. All of these maps will see to different degrees of mixed use hubs, which is something council has kept as kind of a common thread. Throughout this conversation about accommodating growth is looking at using, using and expanding upon. Mixed use hubs in our current city limits. So that's downtown Waterfront, Pioneer and Royal. And then that area around Clark College to the east of the junction. So, yeah, anything else on?
Just on this, just as you're orienting yourself on these maps, they're very busy. There's a lot going on with that. We understand that their land use maps tend to be that way. However, one of the things to kind of focus on is where the colors are vibrant, where you see vibrant colors. That is where changes are occurring. So the really heavy black checked slashed area, all those heavy blacked areas that are bright. Those are additions to our urban growth boundary.
Those are site-specific requests.
Yes, site-specific requests. Of those areas that are bright colors on that map inside the current boundary, those are areas that are changing. In this proposal, like the mixed use area by Clark College, adding some densification there. So it's that bright red because it's changing. Everything else that is really pale, all those other colors, all those neighborhoods in Ridgefield that is pale, that's where it's not changing. So if you were, if you're a resident of Ridgefield and you're looking at where you live. Then you would look into, okay, well, my neighborhood, it's really pale, it doesn't look like there's anything bright happening with me or around me. So say, mine stays the same. In this alternative, my neighborhood stays the same.
Everything I'm looking at is in the city of Ridgefield.
Not yet. Now, the, the areas that are, so two things. First of all, there's the annexation areas that we know about and that we've dealt with in our sub-area plans, right? We have the G Creek Subarea Plan and we have the Cardi Road Subarea Plan. Those are not in our current incorporated city limits, but they're in our urban growth boundary, right? And then the other area that's not in the city technically. Is every one of those site-specific requests that have the, that have, what's it called? Hash marks, have the hash marks. So the, the black, you know, the black bordered hash marks. Those are all the site-specific owner requests that were adjacent to Ridgefield Urban Growth Boundary. That, you know, Director Lust and that the mayor spoke of, that we included in this map.
Another feature of this maximum expansion scenario is that in honoring those expansion requests. And analyzing them, we had to make some trade-offs. And one of those, but to be honest, is a bit funky as we had to assume that. Basically, none of our existing urban growth area would annex, which is not a realistic assumption.
So that's in Cardi Road Subarea, G Creek Plateau, not getting annexed, which we know because you keep getting annexation requests for the Cardi Road Subarea. Is not real.
Why would you assume that they wouldn't annex it?
To make the map work.
For those expansions.
Which is why, so the county, county staff told the county council about this map, well, this is not a legally defensible alternative. Now, they were looking at it from the perspective of, there's a whole bunch of land that's zoned for agricultural uses. That would be hard to defend, de-designate, bringing in. that would be hard to defend, de-designate, bringing in, but also the assumption that areas that are already our boundary, um, not annexing, also hard to defend.
They're saying it's not legally defensible?
For them to adopt this map.
Right.
Of expansion.
In their process.
In their process.
But we do know that they are, like Cardi Road sub-area, they are, like, we're, the assumption, the assumption we're making is that they wouldn't annex. We know they are, so how's that indefensible?
No, that's the point. So that, that is exactly the point. The point is, is that if you're making an assumption that is not uh, that is not uh, meeting reality, then that's what's indefensible. As a court would say, okay, you're assuming these aren't going to, just so you can add some acreage. That's not right. Now, what we have told the county is this wasn't meant to be a defensible standalone alternative. This was simply a map that showed options of site-specific owner requests that they asked for. And the only reason that it isn't a map with the kind of the funky assumption this way is because they asked us to submit maps for them to consider as quote alternatives. So that's the reason that you have the kind of, so when we bring you this map, it isn't for the purposes of asking you, hey, would this map be a good preferred alternative because there are assumptions in it that wouldn't work for you, for us legally.
Right.
However, if there are areas within this map, if there are site-specific owner requests that you say, you know what, that really makes sense. I really think that that does make sense to bring that area into our urban growth boundary. That's why we include this map for your considerations, for that analysis of options. And it's what we did when we presented it to, provided it to the county, said, here, there are some options, um, based on the request that you made of people to ask for their opinion, here are those people.
Councilor Davis.
How, out of these twelve, how many are currently being used in agricultural use, like hot, like that's aggressive? And they, that they've said, we'd still like to be in the urban growth boundary.
So, um, the first piece of that is that there aren't, there aren't twelve UGA expansion requests. It's um, one, eight, nine, ten, three A, but five. Um, we have received uh, site-specific de designation analyses from the owners' legal councils um, making site-specific arguments that these areas are not currently being used for ag and they are characterized by urban growth and therefore de designation would be appropriate.
Yeah, and that's the rule. The rule is, at the state level, the rule is to be designated ag, to designate, designate the farm and for them to keep that designation. You have to have long-term commercial significance. That's kind of the formal language of it. But the quick of it is, if you're characterized by urban, if you're characterized by urban development, so it looks like urban, acts like urban, then it's urban. So the state law says that areas, uh, land that is characterized by urban development cannot be farmland. But to make that decision, that's a county decision to make and the county has to go through the work to figure that out. So the site-specific information that was provided by these property owners um, isn't enough uh, to meet the legal requirements at the state level that the county has to fulfill.
But the county's not gonna be able to come back and say, well, we got the request, but clearly this land is still being used in agricultural way.
They're not making that case. They're simply saying that it, it would need to be a systematic evaluation of the whole system of farming in Clark County to answer that question.
Okay.
And they don't do that. So anything else on this map then?
Tell us anything.
All right, moving on to um, our limited expansion alternative. Again, this is a map that council has seen before. Um, this is the alternative that um, A, does assume that areas in our existing UGA will annex, uh, most prominent are G Creek Plateau and Cardi Road sub-areas. B, it drops those expansion requests east of I five and instead focuses on the two west of I five. So number two A on this map is the mall property, number eleven to the north in the um, industrial urban reserve area. And there are a number of reasons that these are the two expansion areas um, staff and council have kind of kept alive in this option. The mall property uh, from my perspective is kind of a slam dunk. It is surrounded by city and I believe we can make a valid argument that it was left out during previous updates as a mapping error. Um, administrative explanation there, but um, that's two A. Eleven is currently under an industrial urban reserve overlay, um, which has been since.
Nineteen ninety-four.
Nineteen ninety-four. So the implication there by, by having that overlay mapped on it, there is a built-in assumption that eventually that will develop for
Yeah.
job creation.
And there's also a limitation. When you have an urban reserve overlay, when you have this, this, the hash marks on your property like that, you can't further subdivide it. You're not allowed to
Right.
under the law. And so for, since nineteen ninety-four, those property owners have been told you are going to be industry, uh, and it's still sitting there.
Um, a couple of other factors for that piece of property, obviously urban development on three sides um, and I five, and then did you want to speak to the?
Yeah, so again, characterized by urban development, when, when you're talking about that, you look about, you look at what's around. You look and you say, is there urban infrastructure? Is there urban development? Well, in the west you have um, uh, Paradise Point. On the south you have New Rich Town Center and Costco, all of that development. On the east you have I five. And on the north, just north of that, is the Cowlets Tribal Reservation. The Cowlets Tribal Reservation currently doesn't come directly down to there, but um, one of the limiting factors for the tribe, in the tribal reservation was the ability to uh, increase sewer capacity. Um, why? Because they had to do their own sewer treatment plant because under state law, they have not been allowed to connect in with Clark Regional Wastewater District or La Center to in, to increase the capacity of their sewer system. Um, the state legislature this year is just about done passing legislation that will allow tribes to connect to sewer systems or their tribal reservations, which makes good sense. It looks more like an urban area than a farm or a rural area certainly. So it makes sense that they would be able to connect. So the state legislature is taking that action to allow it. Once that occurs, that limiting factor for sewer is gone. And there has every indication that the tribe has, because they can't go to the north because they go down the hill and they go to the river, they can't really go much further to the west than they already are. Uh, on the east you have La Center and they already have an agreement with La Center as far as bringing land into trust. So the next place for them to move and expand is south, toward us. And they're not limited by the State's Growth Management Act, by the county council. Um, they can uh, bring land into trust and develop it as urban without the county council or the state having a set. And that would certainly, doesn't give the city of Ridgefield a say in how it develops, the vision for it. Um, what types of uh, activities occur.
So that would, so potentially if, say, like, I think eleven right there, right? That's kind of mainly what we're talking about. So if, if we were to not bring it into our UGA or if the county said no, then the tribe would potentially purchase that property?
They certainly could.
Okay.
Uh, it's not, I have no uh, information that says that they are in negotiations or that they have, um, that they have actually uh, approached those property owners, but in speaking with those property owners, what they have said, because that is a consolidated group of property owners that have come in and said, we were told thirty-plus years ago, we were going to be industrial and we're still sitting here waiting. And if the county council won't let us actually be part of the vision for the city of Ridgefield in how we develop and the jobs and the people that could come with that, then it is not, uh, then it is not uh, inconsistent with the vision that they have put forward that they would then reach out and talk to the tribe.
So potentially, I, and then we'll get, um, potentially then if that were to happen, the assumption would be that that urban industrial area, we would essentially lose jobs to the, the tribe, to the tribe, or the commercial activity that happened there, we would lose essentially tax revenue, that sales tax revenue that would come to that area too, right?
Yeah, regardless of whether it lays fallow or whether it's uh, developed by another entity, we would lose those jobs and opportunity for housing. It is simply a matter of, when you're looking at, is it characterized by urban, recognizing that not only are there three sides of it that are already urban, the fourth side to the north is urbanized and is moving south.
Mm-hmm, okay.
How much property is that? Five and a half acres?
Which, which one?
The Zimmerley property?
Eleven, so that group of properties was about two hundred acres.
Oh, two hundred acres, oh my god, okay.
And in our model, that was in addition to almost a thousand jobs um, using a mixed use overlay up there revealed about twelve hundred housing units, about a thousand of which would be affordable to households making less than eighty percent area needed income. Um, so it is a significant help um, to our numbers there too and talking to um, the property owners, that they want to do mixed use development there.
And so again, for a thousand units that would be going, that could be accommodated in that area, once again, look at the areas of color. Have more areas that have vibrant colors where there is, there are mixed use hubs being created. Um, so there is some changes within that. But a lot of areas still left alone, a lot of neighborhoods that stay the same in this map.
And this would limit the redevelopment that we would have to do and exist in areas, right?
The redevelopment, the expectations in both this and the larger expansion would be a redevelopment percentage of ten percent versus twenty-five percent. And instead of thirty percent of all of the residential properties having ADUs, half that, fifteen percent. So that's the assumption that's built into that.
Okay. Councilor Davis, did you have a question?
Oh, no, I was just gonna make the, you know, point out that, you know, give or take, you know, even the northern edge of Zimmerley is still a mile, mile and a half from, you know, the current boundary of, of the tribe. And so it would be a big jump for them to come that far south. I mean, that's just across the street from Paradise Point. So it's not like we're talking way up, you know, by like the horse corral or anything like that. We're talking just across the street from Paradise Point. So, I mean, it would be a big.
There already, there already was a map of expansion, potential expansion area that was released. If there was, there was a Colombian article talking about the area of potential expansion for the tribe when there was conversations with La Center. That brought it down to two ninety-nine. So two ninety-nine is just north of
Yeah.
the Zimmerley expansion.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not saying it's impossible, I'm just saying how big of a jump that would be in terms of.
And the map was their map. So this was, the Cowlets Tribe released a map showing where they were looking to expand and that takes them down to two ninety-nine, which is, you know, you're going from two ninety-nine to two eighty-nine, which is much less. Which is why we look at it and say, okay, there is already clear indications. There are clear indications that that southward movement uh, is likely, yeah.
Anything else on this?
Councilor Ross.
Yeah.
The distance from uh, where they're at now, three nineteenth, which is a little bit aside of it, but um, the amount of acres there is probably seventy-five acres total back down to two ninety-nine because it's a triangle. It's not very wide between Royal Road, that's Thirty-first Avenue and Royal Road. Between there and the freeway,
Yeah.
it hasn't much footage. As it gets down there, it could be, I think it's probably less than a half a mile at two ninety-nine to the freeway, a length of two ninety-nine. It's a little short road that, that, yeah, scale, yeah. So for them to gobble up that much more area, isn't a lot of volume far as footage goes for whatever they plan for in the future. Um, as Steve has said, number eleven has been on the books since ninety-four. Uh, I think that's when we got, that wasn't the Ridgefield bound, boundary, Ridgefield went before the boundary board, which is no more. It has been disbanded, but Ridgefield uh, they, and we have three thousand residents in the city of Ridgefield and we got four thousand acres from the boundary review board, which takes in, I'm gonna say all those Zimmerley property, the other Zimmerley property, Dollar Tree, all of that was brought in at, at that time. And you probably heard me say this before, but that is what gave Ridgefield the opportunity uh, when urban growth areas and uh, urban growth, urban growth boundary boards come, come in. Anyway, other cities, I mean, use, Vega, Pomasi Rock, all them cities didn't have a larger growth boundaries on. Ridgefield, we've had a urban area that we've been able to grow in since that act came in. And so that has given us an advantage to turn it around since the Great Depression in two thousand eight-nine, as far as development goes, when they would be able to move forward. So I guess when I'm talking about a number eleven, we need that land back for the future for the community to turn around and be able to expand in. Uh, we, and I say as a council, we, another one we took was uh, the Milk Brown property, Paradise Point, yeah. Uh, it was all five acre pieces and the council decided to bring that in so that we didn't end up with a bunch of martini farms, five, they were five acre parcels, there were eighteen of them. And uh, so that we, we were able to not have our northern boundary sealed off with a bunch of five acre pieces. So it was always a visionary, looking ahead for the future. Don't worry about what you got today, plan ahead, you know, the vision. And that's what Ridgefield has always been, has been. Uh, and everybody is fairly complimentary of the way Ridgefield is growing and had the vision. And uh, so it's, you need to just charge to keep that vision going forward. Our, 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 still our vision, so.
The only thing I wanted to kind of just to, to finish the thought here on this map, on the limited expansion, again, why those two, you know, the reason we're talking about these two expansion areas is because this was just a question amongst council and staff of if we were going to grow, what are those areas that make the most sense for the purposes of accommodating uh, necessary population and uh, and sought after jobs? And which make the most sense legally? And so from a legal standpoint, it's less about who would ultimately take ownership of any of the parcels, it's more about which places make the most sense that aren't farmland and that you could easily make the case. And so when we talk about what it's, how it's characterized or who ultimately would come down and own a piece, that's not really the point. The point for us is, is it farmland? Is it farmland of long-term commercial significance? And eleven and two A were the easiest to make the case that, no, they're not. They are not farmed, they haven't been farmed for many years. They don't meet the criteria required to be farmland. So they offer the best opportunity to be part of the vision for the city. So that's why those two were chosen.
It just really feels to me like the county council has just absolutely advocated their job. I mean, they have put us, and I assume every city in Clark County in this position of of having something that we have to do by the state and then keeping us from being, being able to do our job the way that we need to do it. I mean, I just, I just don't see how they can get by without doing what they're supposed to do and having this study done. I mean, I just really cannot understand this.
That's a great segue into the, into the last map, which is to show what their decisions to this day would mean and how that would look for our state.
So this map is a visual, uh, kind of what Mr. Stewart talked through, through that table with the comparison. Um, first I'll just quickly point out what stays the same. Um, in this no expansion alternative, we're still assuming that areas in the existing UGA annex over the twenty-year horizon Um, in the no expansion alternative, we're still assuming that areas on the existing UGA annex over the twenty year horizon. We're still assuming um those key mixed use hubs, downtown waterfront, Clark College, um, et cetera. What's different here, and you can see here, you know, focusing on the more vibrant colors, there's a lot more to focus on. Um, on this one is looking at all of our existing R L D four zones. Um, shifting those up to R L D six essentially, and then all of our existing R M D sixteen zones. Shifting up to a higher density assumption. Um, looking more like the density that's allowed currently in our mixed use overlays, basically. And that can happen in a few ways, you know, you could just rezone four to six. Or you can keep it four, but assume more redevelopment, assume more sort of middle housing types in there, assume more ADUs. Um, so that is showing under a note expansion alternative, the areas of the city where we would. Now have to look at making those types of changes.
Hmm.
To accommodate, um, basically to accommodate our housing.
Can, can you give an example of a development here presently that is R M D sixteen?
R M D sixteen, let me think for a moment, um.
Some Kemper Grove?
Some of Kemper Grove is R M D sixteen. Um, so the, you know, they're, I think they're detached.
Are you, okay.
McCormick Creek is R M D sixteen.
Think townhomes, three up, four up, townhomes. R M D sixteen used to be kind of the highest level of density you would see in the city of Ridgefield. So in the Pioneer Canyon area, you can see it in the townhomes that are between thirty second and thirty fifth.
Right.
You can see them on the west side of Kemper Grove. You can see them in a lot of different areas where it's like, um, reached the, well, that's, which will cross it is not R M D sixteen.
Right, um, right at Sevier and.
Yeah.
Hillhurst.
I, I guess I'm going with that, but so there, there's still single family units.
There's single family attached.
Attached, okay.
There's some detached, you get some, it's depends on the generation of when they were built. But it, some of them are attached.
Yeah.
Narrow, detached, really narrow product, some of them are attached.
Okay.
And we would have to bring in everything that's, that's already in now. And so the donut hole would have to come in.
Well, that's, that would be my question, yeah.
Yeah, and be developed.
Can, can you actually talk to a donut hole, yeah?
So in this assumption, we are, in this mapping alternative. We are assuming that the donut hole and the Cardi Road subareas stay true to the adopted subarea plan.
Mm hmm.
So those zones not touching those.
So those are big zones that they'd be brought in.
Yes, and the last alternative also assumes they'd be brought in.
Okay.
Um, because they're in the existing urban growth boundary.
Brought in like annexed?
Anexed, yeah, yeah, so.
But annexed.
So in both the last, the limited expansion and no expansion alternative assumes that. Anything in our current urban growth area that includes the donut hole and Cardi Road will be annexed over the twenty years.
But at, but with the number of houses, the size of lots that are in the subarea plans. And that assumption was made by staff because you have literally as a council, you have adopted those subarea plans as the guiding principles for those two areas. So you've already blessed those areas for how they would develop. So those assumptions remain true in this map and in the map, uh, the last map we saw, in all the maps.
Right, I, and I just wanna be really clear here, just, so when you say like. In the, in the G Creek Plateau, southern, you say being annexed, who would be doing the annexing? Because there's not been this council's policy to ever annex.
No.
Without at first being requested.
So the assumption is that that policy would stay the same, it would be proper property order initiated. Um, we're simply assuming because that's in the urban growth area, we have to assume that over the planning horizon.
Sure.
Most of it.
Okay.
Will come.
I just wanna be clear that it's not the city that'd be wanting to those property owners and being like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna get at too. We choose you. No.
Is the purpose tonight looking at the space for alternatives and choosing what we feel like would be the best option?
Yes.
Okay, so I have no. One at all.
Yeah, council, is that, is that your consensus that we, like, we can start with this one? Because we really do, uh, Council Pavella, that is exactly the question that we need to answer for tonight, is to try to get a sense of what is your preference? What's, and as we started with, and as Mayor Cole indicated, really what is our community, your community, your constituents, your council's vision versus. Um, not, you know, versus necessarily what we've been told. Um, so that's, so yeah, you have every ability to say, no, that is not your prefer.
Yeah, and I'm just one person, but I'm just not even kind of willing to even a little bit entertain this one, so I don't know. It seems like a logistical nightmare.
So can you give just a, a little more guidance for staff on, why, what is it?
It's too colorful, we go in and change things. And I remember someone coming to a council meeting and saying, you don't care because it's not happening in your neighborhood. And that really resonates with me. I would hate to impose something on people where they have no control over what their neighborhood looks like, where they live. Where, where they chose to buy. And then seeing that it doesn't matter what CCNRs are in their neighborhood, that their neighbors are willing to, could do whatever they want and change the entire look. Of where they chose to purchase their home at. And I feel the same way, I would be really upset if this was to come into play and my neighbor tore their house down and put a fourplex there, like. None of this makes sense, it looks like chaos, and I don't think that chaos is the vision that we have fully shown.
That was a very thorough explanation, thank you, I appreciate it, that was perfect.
Anybody else, council, would care to weigh in on that, just with, with your rationale, I think that'd be beneficial.
I mean, I, I, I support like tossing this one out. Um, I'm glad that, personally, I'm glad I had that opportunity to see what it looks like, just because it's been talked about. Like, hey, if we didn't do it, this is the lengths that we'd have to go in order to feed and compliance. Um, and so I'm glad I got to see it and realize, yeah, that doesn't sound great. I, I think that, um, you know, among other things, kind of things that comes out to me is. Like, there's an irony of this desire to preserve farmland, okay, fine. But then you're making where there actually is stuff going on, way higher density that doesn't really blend with.
Yeah.
Like, an agricultural environment. Whereas, you know, we have a, we have a rural suburban uh community that has been thoughtful. Um, we preserve the most open space of any other city in the county uh during development. And that's by design, that's to keep it. Uh, you know, there are pockets, and there are gonna be pockets where it's appropriate to do like some mixed use stuff. And, and those things make me excited, but I think that has to be strategic. This is way, the, it, it's not consistent with what we've done. You've already mentioned the logistics nightmares. Um, and, and I just don't think it's consistent, it, it would, it, it wouldn't look great. You know, driving in and all of a sudden you see high density all of a sudden.
Mm hmm.
It, it just, it's not consistent, so yeah, I support.
Never ten.
So as a city, we spend hours and hours of the building, the planning permission, hours and hours and hours and hours planning carefully. On how we want these neighborhoods to look, how we want these neighborhoods to look, all the parks for it, all the work. And then they can't even take the time to hire someone to do a true analysis of what real farmland is in Clark County. This has got me so checked off. I mean, this is just crazy. I mean, they need to actually spend the time to get the work done. Because from a former commissioner, I know that the land review that they have done is not actually farmland. According to Betty Sue Morris, and I think that she actually knows what she's talking about. And so if they don't get this redone, um, it isn't truly farmland that they're talking about. I think that, you know, they need to recognize the work that the city has put into preserving. The open spaces, the parks, all the things that we've done and that we don't want to, you know, shove all these houses into our neighborhood and make it. Not the place that people want to live. Like Katie said, she doesn't, I mean, if she doesn't want that in her neighborhood, I don't want it in my neighborhood, why should we force it on other people? I completely agree, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just really conflicted with what we're being asked to do, but then being, oh, by the way, you can't do it. I, I don't understand the rationale. I really liked the first alternative we looked at. Now, obviously, it's probably not gonna happen, but one or two would be my choice. One being my, my, my first choice. I'm just, I don't know what to say, I, it's just like we're chasing our tail.
I, I think we have to acknowledge that if we go with one or two, it's, there's gonna be an advocacy piece involved on our behalf.
But do we have a choice?
That would be the choice.
Yeah, you know, this, this just doesn't work.
Yeah, we're all saying this isn't the choice, it has to be.
Yeah, but by electing one or two, and I think that is the right. We are also saying that we have to take on an advocacy role with the county council and.
Think about who we elect next time too.
Uh, I, I, I think it'd be beneficial to hear from everybody else, when councillor Hamilton, could you perhaps weigh in if you're?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, this has been very informative for me because as someone who likes things close and together, I like, it makes sense to work inside out. But how I was sort of previously thinking about, like, I had that in my mind. And the thought of us being so spread out in Ridgefield, like, that, just the old school Ridgefield person in me is like, that's really far. But hearing numbers, losing all those jobs, like, we have to plan thoughtfully like this for the growth that has to happen. And I just am thinking about the logistical nightmare that that would be to redo all this. So I'm between one and two, I would love to hear more from other people too, but um it makes more sense. I, exactly, exactly what Katie said too, about the neighbor, like, I wanna operate with the capacity of, I care about the people that live here.
Yeah, great, and councillor, uh, councillor Wells?
I go, yeah, let's comment, no. Number one is growing along with the vision that's been for Ridgefield for thirty years. Ridgefield has always been complimented on the growth that they've been bringing forth. And uh, for the county to turn it around, to change that vision. And when us go into their mold that they want, still doesn't fit well with the council and city of Ridgefield. So, um, we need to have resource land for the future, for our future growth as far as uh employment zone. And it is uh provenly beneficial to us in the past. And I went into the county courthouse and uh. I get some of the councillors getting off the elevator. And they would say to me, as I was walking there, they'd say, I was just talking about you. And I said, what are you talking about me? It wasn't you, we're talking about the city of Ridgefield and what they're doing. And how well they're planning things and how well things are moving. And that was coming forward, the county council was about three years ago. And that was, was the comment that they had here, uh, for section.
No, number, number one.
Okay, did you have something else you were gonna add there?
I just have, I mean, it's not really relative to this, but just the conflict with county councils, the things that they approve. And how it impacts Ridgefield, and all I can think about was being on planning commission and. Um, Ms. Lothar, if you were there, we had the conversation about the schools. Everyone, when we talk about growth, is so concerned about the city of Ridgefield and the amount of children that this would bring into our already topped out schools. When the county approves all of these land developments that are in nine eight six four two, that are outside of the city limits. And all of the thousands of families coming to Ridgefield, if that is not the city of Ridgefield, do we bring those? That is the county doing that. And then we have to figure out how do we support our community with a lot of services where the county is building and they are coming to Ridgefield.
Thank you, um, I'll just add a couple additional thoughts to this too. First is, I, I think that the preservation of ag lands in this county, I think, I think is, is a responsibility um of, of all policymakers. You know, and especially here in Ridgefield, like, you, you look at these windows right now, right? And, and you look at sort of the rural environment, the semi-rural environment that we live in. And we have done a very exceptional job over the last ten, twenty years of managing our growth. And by the way, a significant amount of growth, more growth than any other jurisdiction in this county. More growth than any, than any other place in southwest Washington arguably. And um, we've done an exceptional job to preserve the ag lands around us, to keep that rural charm that we still have. And we've been able to add in uh the levels of density, I think, that have been expected of us and have been fitting of us as well. And, you know, as you go through this process, and this is a, a learning process, I, obviously, none of us have been participating in a comp plan before. Except for maybe Mr. Stewart, maybe some more consultants, but um, you, you look at this, like, it can't be cookie cutter, right? Like, there's no one size fits all for any community. We are not Washugon, we are not backed up against, you know, a heavily wooded mountainous area. We're not, you know, we're not battleground, who doesn't really necessarily need to expand, except for adding maybe employment zones. But they're not looking to expand, we're, we're definitely not Vancouver, and we sure as heck aren't Portland or Seattle. This is not an urban community that we live in. And so to characterize this by saying, going back to the no expansion thing and forcing us into maybe more density and more urbanization. Like councillor Davis was saying, I don't think it's fitting to this community, I don't even think it's wise. I, I think, I think it would be a mess, not only to the people that we represent, but a mess to the rest of the county in that regard. Um, plus, I don't think it's realistic, if you were to add like all the color that we're looking at, like, that, that's an assumption that that's where you have to add your density. That doesn't mean that you're gonna add density, that doesn't mean that people are gonna magically wanna suddenly add every home and every neighborhood. In Platter Ridge, you're gonna wanna add eighty years in our background, nobody's gonna wanna do that, right?
No.
So if we're trying to get to a clean comp plan, something that really makes sense, and by the way, that's what we're supposed to do, is find what makes sense. Getting to there, like, you have, you can't just say, okay, now we, we painted it all in certain colors and we're gonna add the density there. And then nobody does it, developers don't wanna touch it because there's, it, it doesn't make sense to them. And you're leaving a whole bunch of unused fallow ag land that will never, ever get used. The malt properties are a great example, right?
Right.
You know, that, that will never, ever be farmed land again. Zimmerley, it's like, we, you know, just driving back from Olympic today, looking back at that, like, that's not ag land, like, you know, councillor Wells said that himself. So, you know, I would, I would invite our county council, maybe we'll, we'll call C Tran to see if they get a bus, like, let's go on a tour. Let's take them on a tour of, of Ridgefield and show them what this looks like and what makes the most sense for our community. Because I think if they saw it, they would understand that, like, this is, we're not making any of these requests. Now, I am not really necessarily favorite, in favor of number one, because I do think there's a lot of those ag lands that, you know, um. You, you know, I, I don't know if this makes sense or not, and I wanna find the middle ground there. But um, but here's what I would say, I, I think that the, the county really does need to do the study. And I know that it would take time, and I know it would take money, but I think that we need to have that conversation with them. Because the study is important in really getting to understand what we're up against. Because we will never be in an urban center, like, this is not, you're never gonna see downtown Ridgefield look like the downtown waterfront Vancouver. And nobody wants it to, nobody's moving here for that reason, and I don't think anybody will ever do that. So we've done a really good job to be careful of how we built out our community. But this, no expansion alternative is not it.
It is not it.
So council, uh, thank you very much for that insight on that. Can we go back to the uh first one, the map for the maximum expansion? Okay, so as we spoke of earlier, there are five actual expansion areas that are characterized by agricultural zoning in this map. So if all of those, and so with that and all the assumptions, then the map works. And that's what we talked about, that the assumption that we wouldn't be annexing areas that are in our urban growth boundary is inconsistent. With the reality that we've seen and likely would not survive challenge. Thus, at the very least, need to, I would suggest, assume. A greater amount of annexation in those areas will occur because we know it will. And so if you do that, then not all five of those areas can be included in preferred alternative where the map works. And you do need to make the math work on this. So the question becomes, staff looked at one and three A as kind of the, the top tier. Of most likely, most defensible areas that are characterized by urban development and not farmland. areas that are characterized by urban development and not farmland. That would provide uh additional uh areas for jobs and people. Of the other three, of eight, nine, and ten, are there one or more of those that you look at and you say, yes, I think that makes for the vision of our city? One or more of those makes sense. And the reason I ask that is because not all five of them can exist on a map that has the math work and assumptions that are more accurate. So we're gonna, no matter what, as you said, Mayor Cole, have to find some middle ground if it's not one or if it's not two, that you wanted to advocate for.
Um, I, how about we do this time? Uh, we're gonna start on, we'll go the reverse order. If you have, councillor Wells would start with you. If you have something, you know, the a a preference on that, what you're seeing right there?
Well, no, I I said it earlier. One and three A, definitely three A. I mean, three A is a no brainer. But uh one that's been on the books, like you said, since nineteen ninety-four with an ag uh early uh industrial overlay, it isn't something that the present county councillors are even a part of. They have no institutional knowledge of the planning that we've been going on over the years. And they're trying to, so yeah, their um idea, I guess. And uh so, yeah, them two are the major ones. I don't, I'm up in the air on yet this word.
Okay.
You're in favor of the limited.
Yeah, so you you're, yeah, option two, essentially. Councillor Pavella?
Same, one and three A make the most sense to me.
I'm in favor of option two now.
Yeah, you are.
Well, because that option, the limited extension includes both of those areas you just mentioned. That's why they're saying that.
Yeah, I I think two makes sense, assuming based on what we've been seeing, that more will get added in the map, the map out.
If I understand it correctly, we could possibly add area eight to one and three. The reason I like eight, it's immediately across the street from what will be our newest grade school.
Oh.
We're already there. And why would it not make sense to bring eight in or include it if possible? If not, then obviously one and three A would be would be appropriate.
Mayor Cole, come on.
Two is the area around Clark College, right?
Yeah, two is uh a standard messy hub around.
Yeah.
That's already was, already in the city.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm sorry, I interrupted a minute. Eight would be immediately north of Clark College. Am I correct?
Eight is immediately north of the new elementary school.
Yes, okay.
So I'm definitely for one and three A. Um. I mean, eight would be fine, too. So we're gonna go for three, whatever.
Councillor Davis?
Uh, I completely agree with councillor Berkle. One, three, eight, and eight. I think eight makes the most sense because of its proximity to the school.
And then from my end, it's definitely one and three A, and I'm open to eight as well. So just the same thing.
Perfect. Yeah, that's the guidance that we needed. So what we are looking at, then, just to feedback what I'm hearing, to to make sure that our staff and consultants are hearing as well, is that if we looked at a map, go to the minimum extension. So if we looked at the limited expansion alternative that is before you on this, and then go back to the map. And then look to add area eight and then make sure the math works on that. And so now, as far as the mapping and assuring that we are uh meeting the requirements from the county on the number of units of affordable housing and the jobs that we are seeking, as well as, you know, meeting all of the other assumptions that are contained within it. But that is the map that you would like us to kind of at least move to the next level of advocacy for. Yes?
Okay, that we are moving to the next level of advocacy for. So that's what it's gonna take.
Yeah, that's what it would take.
Do we have any feeling as to whether or not adding eight would blow the whole thing out of the water? That we would be comfortable with one and three A and leave it that way, keep eight out, or include A and hope for the best?
At at this point, uh, it would not make a difference because one, three, A, and eight are all zone A. And if the county does not do a resource land study, looking at any ag, then no land, no matter what's happening with it or could happen with it, can be brought in by the county council into the city's UGA. So I don't know that it would make much of a difference at this point. Now, toward the end, as the final th- final environmental impact statement comes back from the county and they're doing the final analysis on things. And if they do a study of farmland and then, yeah, then maybe it could make a difference because they may come back and say, okay, one of those makes sense and not the others based on the analysis. But for this point in time, I would say no. It does not make a difference.
Okay, thank you.
But right across the street from eight, isn't that where there's all of those units, the the two-story apartment?
So to the west of eight is, what's the name of it?
McCormick Creek.
McCormick Creek. So that has relatively dense housing in McCormick Creek, right? And then just south of it is where the elementary school is.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
So it's right across McCormick Creek, okay.
Correct. And that is part of the argument that was made in the analysis that was provided to staff by those property owners. Um, but not to our, just our staff, but county staff, letting them know why it should not.
Yeah. So I will follow up question um based on that comment, too. Um, I believe in our current model, we are looking at eight. Um, and by model, I mean the tool that says, this is how many units will be there. We're looking at eight as low density residential. Is that appropriate? Or when we look at a scenario including eight, should we think about assigning a different residential density there?
So let me break it down to a kind of a layman's sense. Should it look like McCormick Creek? Uh, or more that, you know, tighter, less tight?
Well, it's so close to McCormick Creek, it seems to me like it might be a good place for affordable housing with the school right there. I.
Yeah, perfect. I I guess it depends on how the math shakes out, right? Like, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll do the math to make all of that work. But when, again, the work you're doing today is the work that you you're supposed to do, which is like really relaying a vision for what you want to see. Not being afraid of the conversation or the analysis, but saying what you think makes sense. So you telling us, yeah, this might be a good spot for that kind of housing, we can make the math work uh to do that. And so that's what we'll go to work on. So you've provided us exactly what we need.
Councillor Wells, is that the Kane property?
That is the Jones property is is eight.
Oh, that's.
Kane Kane's only have one acre.
Oh, oh, is that all? Oh.
One acre.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just where their shop is and their driveway, their house, it's only one acre.
Just the one, okay.
We will go to work. We will put a a map together that's uh that implements the ideas and the vision that you put forward to us. We'll make sure that we uh get that back to you so that we are meeting the expectations. And then there obviously will be some follow up necessary um internally and externally.
Well, I think if we need to go to a county council meeting or whatever we need to do, we need to put as much pressure as we possibly can on the county council to follow through with what they're supposed to do. As far as I'm concerned, what they're supposed to do is to have that studied again.
I'd like some air suggestions. Get a seat, Travis. Play them out, let let them look at it. There's nothing like having, you can have a map on the paper, but if you're out and see it visually, it makes all the difference in the world.
No, that's a great idea.
We're happy to work with you on that.
Okay.
So in the interest of time, if you feel like we've done enough on that and you have direction, we do have other pieces of this study session, we wanna make sure we get you on housing and economic development.
I think we can move on. Perfect. Thank you, councillor.
All right, thank you. Um, and thank you to our team for producing many, many versions of our maps. Giving you all something to to look at. All right, so our next segment here is on the housing element of the comprehensive plan, obviously has a really close relationship to land use. Um, so the first slide here is sort of our our basic housing requirements under the Growth Management Act. Um, one we've talked about a lot is planning for and accommodating housing affordable to those different economic bands, different income bands. Uh, and reconciling future housing needs with existing capacity. This is what we've been talking about. Um, some additional requirements of the legislation are identifying and addressing barriers to construction of housing affordable to those different income bands. Um, and also identifying and dress and addressing regulations that result in in disparate impacts for communities who have traditionally had more challenges to access housing market. Right? So moving on, I have a couple of slides here on existing conditions. Um, just some kind of facts we are resting on here in the city of Ridgefield. I'll let those sit there for a moment.
And just, one of the things that we know about Ridgefield is that we tend uh to have larger households uh that are younger. Uh, and it's that is continued uh continued on.
Okay, next slide. This shows our um existing breakdown of housing type and tenure. So type is, we're looking at um single family detached versus other, basically. Um, it's unsurprising that, you know, the lion's share of housing in Ridgefield currently is single family detached. Although in the past several years, we have definitely seen that share of townhomes and multifamily increase. Um, and then the darkest color on there shows owner occupied versus the lighter green is winter occupied. Okay. So now we are going to move into some draft housing goals and policies. Again, the purpose here is really to get your feedback on the the topics we're looking at here. Are are there any areas that we're totally missing or need to reframe? Um, basically, what do you think? So we're looking at kind of three main pillars of housing goals and policies. One is variety, another is affordability, and the third is accessibility. So the first slide here is goals, the first goal, housing goal, support a variety of housing types to ensure equitable housing opportunities. Um, I'll let that sit and welcome any questions and discussion.
I know I've I've mentioned this in the past and I'm probably repeating myself, but there's a community in Oregon that has done some lovely five-story residential. And they're all oriented toward, if I could just take a moment here, when I can be more succinct with what I wanna say. It it's a subdivision, elevated. Well, anyway, that, just give me a second. Everything is broken down by income. They have one, two, three, and four bedroom units. Supportive housing, veterans housing, there's a centralized park, a community center. And and I think something we should potentially look at is in Ridgefield. I realize five story is very, very integral. But I think it's the most appropriate use of land and would provide us with what we're looking for regarding mixed-use residential.
Oh, councillor Davis?
Yeah. Um, I I mean, I think you guys have picked up, I'm also a fan of the mixed-use residential overlay. Um, and I guess I would also tie it to data that we received related to um the percentage of people in Ridgefield that work from home. Um, and I would agree that obviously um being able to do um, you know, some higher density, mixed-use stuff, those could help us reach our um, you know, attainability uh requirements in terms of different income bands. But um, you know, even outside of that, create a walkable communities. Um, and and I realize that might sound in contrast to like the vision that we've that I I just spoke against, where it's like hot and this high density thing. I I think that there are opportunities in certain areas to create awesome, walkable uh communities within the city that are higher density, that have a park, that have um, you know, uh first floor uh retail and and restaurant, you know, little coffee shop, little shop, you know, um boutiques or whatever it is. Um, and I think that that really would resonate with a lot of folks that um you know, work from home. I mean, painting the picture of, imagine, oh, what is it? Pioneer Village. Imagine if there was two stories of residential above Pioneer Village. And you've got, you know, a few restaurants, you've got coffee shops, you've got a pizza shop, things of that nature. Um, you got a gym. Um, that's kind of the vision I have for not everywhere, of course. But I think there's some areas where strategically that can make sense. And so, uh, and I think that can offset our targets as well.
Councillor, for both of what the councillors have indicated, if you look at policy five point one point one, it starts getting at that, but what you're speaking to is vertically integrated mixed use. And so it's something that we can, you know, if that is something that you want as a kind of a policy, as a goal, uh, that is something that we can look at, not only implementing expanded mixed-use residential overlays, but uh expanded and vertically integrated mixed-use overlays, uh, which is what uh councillor Davis is speaking to, is what we would call vertically integrated. That you have the commercial and you have the residential above it versus in separate buildings. Uh, so it's it's more efficient with the space. So if we added that kind of that tweak to it, would that help get to a policy level? Because again, these are policies, very broad, what we're doing.
I mean, uh, kind of a lot of things, I'm willing to walk down the path and see what it looks like. You you know, I I'm willing to explore that because I think that in certain applications, it can make sense. Um, you know, I I've talked about kind of that area north of of Clark College, I think. Um, it is kind of a prime opportunity area to explore something like that. Um, you know, but.
How do we clarify that in in a in a way that, like, to what to what you were just saying, you know, without without kind of sound like we're contradicting ourselves, like, because I think pockets of those are are really beneficial.
You're you're actually not contradicting what you just told us on the land use side, because the land use alternative that you are that you have requested us to really flesh out includes expanded mixed-use residential overlays. It includes hubs of mixed-use, higher-density, intensity environments with the vibrancy and the interaction of services and amenities and places to live, work, play, all within those hubs. So you you're doing the work. It's in those maps. So it is not inconsistent with what you just told us.
Okay.
It's just targeting those areas as opposed to putting it everywhere.
Councillor Berkle?
Just to further, I I would be in favor of considering, and I know I've mentioned this in the past, the new development at Royal and Pioneer would be, in my opinion, a great opportunity for some vertical housing. Why? You're close to Costco, you'd be close to the Y, close to the civic center, you could walk the Rose Hours. There's, it's walkability. It's what we're talking about. Maybe not five, maybe three. Um, but I think that's an area that definitely should be looked at because of everything that's available. I think it fits what we talk about.
Anybody else have any perspectives on this, uh, any of these policies? Oh, councillor Pavella?
I would like to see um policy five, one, three, encourage a mix of uh encourage a mix of housing development, cottage housing to be added next to there. I have this vision of a cute little walkable cottage community. And when we talk about um equitable housing opportunities, I remember being a young mom and like, all that you can afford is living in an apartment. And I don't wanna raise my family in an apartment. And I don't think that we should force and assume that anyone who is a, you know, struggling for housing opportunities, the apartment is the answer for them.
And I think having a cute cottage home where you can feel like you have a home or your kids can go outside and play and they're not lugging the car keys up and down the stairs, it's annoying. And I think that I want more opportunities for different types of families.
That's absolutely something we can add in there. Cottage, so cottage housing, we've talked about that for a long time. I'm, I'm open to it. We've also talked a lot about, you know, designing communities around remote workers. And I'm not sure what that looks like from a policy standpoint, like, you know. If you hold that, when we get to the economic development element, it actually contains some of that. Okay, cool, yeah.
Looking at 5.15, the two eighty years, I'm not super opposed to it, but I would gravitate towards if there's going to, only one of them can be detached. You know?
So we will be required, I believe the timeline is within six months of adoption of our comp plan to update our zoning code to allow to accessory joining us for residential wise.
No restrictions on that.
Well, there are restrictions and I believe what you just brought up with one attached, one detached might be possible. We'll keep that in mind.
I just feel like if two eighty years, I mean, I'm a fan of, you know, property rights and if people need to utilize their property in that way, I think that, but it can get a little clustered. So I think if it's, if it's two, if it's like a built-out daylight basement and then it's a detach, okay, that's fine. You know what I mean? I think that's more consistent with.
Well, we can bring that back. It'll come back as a code amendment, so once that occurs, we'll definitely get into the detail with you on it.
Will you talk a little bit about 5.14? I'm not sure that I. Yeah, I need to hear more about that.
Yeah, so again, policy level here. Manufactured housing is currently allowed. Honestly, I think we're meeting the policy, we just don't have it in writing yet. But there are jurisdictions where there are regulations that create higher barriers to building manufactured housing. I don't think we have that now. You can put like, and manufactured housing, how we define it is it's still on a foundation. So it's not, it's not something with wheels, it's a home on a foundation, it's just a manufactured versus stick-built, as the language says. So the policy is about not creating barriers through our code language that would make it more difficult to place a manufactured house on a lot versus a traditional stick-built house.
So practically speaking, it's not a change in what we're doing. At a state level, it's something that is, this type of policy is being promoted at the state level because they, they know that manufactured housing can be a more affordable option for people. And so they are trying to lower the barriers for that type of housing. So this is simply a recognition of a state priority that's already implemented within our code.
But that would have to be allowed within your HOA, right?
Yeah, nothing else would change within your codes. Yeah, it would still be a part of the name, you know, HOAs, you know, ACCNR still are determinative. So, yeah.
I love the idea of manufactured. I think it's the word manufacturer home freaks people out, but we have evolved and there are some incredible manufactured housing communities that are, and it gives families to feel like they have ownership with something at a different or lower income.
Good question. We're talking about manufactured home communities, but are we not? Are we talking about allowing manufactured homes on residential lots? Just first in the middle of Tavern Ridge on an empty lot.
So what this is saying is that you would treat, that our code treats them the same as a stick build was built. And so if there was an empty lot and it was buildable and somebody wanted to build something on it, that we, at the city level, would not be creating a higher bar for somebody to build that manufactured home on a lot versus a stick build. That is what this would say.
And then maybe a brief rundown of 5.16, just what do we do with the floating homes?
So it's an interesting mix of regulatory environments for the floating homes. We do have requirements associated with the floating homes. There was code developed by council to require betterment of the infrastructure and the, the conditions in our floating home community. But a lot of those floating homes are also regulated by the state because they're on water, in the waters of the US and may have issues associated with that. So it is, it is definitely a complex regulatory environment for us. It's simply, when we talk about regulations for floating homes to ensure that they are maintaining and minimize environmental impact, it's really in our area of impact and influence assuring that quality. And so this inclusion is more just covering our bases because they're a part of our community. Definitely.
It's acknowledging at a policy level that that is a housing type that exists in our community. And the policy would say, yes, we want that to continue existing and be safe and livable.
I think we're good.
All right, so the second goal under housing and sort of second theme here is affordability. So this really ties into what we've talked about before, which is, if you zone it, they might not come unless you have some, some other tools in your toolbox to incentivize construction of housing that is affordable. And that, it gets more challenging, the lower income you're targeting. So this is presenting a starting point for options that we could put into policy as options that the city of Ridgefield is committed to exploring.
Can we? Counsel, any questions on that?
For, for policy 5.22, that property tax levy or linkage fees and margin impact fee, does that, is that pulling from Newville? Is that incorporated in like property taxes from all other people or where is that money coming from specifically?
I think that would be an implementation question. Yeah, I don't.
I think there, yeah, there are multiple methodologies that you could employ with this. Is that counsel manic or do we, would we have to go to the voters on something like that? Or is it kind of like dependent on what it looks like? I'd have to get you more information on that. I don't have the detail at hand. And I don't know if any of the rest of the team has that, just off the top. So mostly voter approved.
5.24 regulating short-term rentals, would that like be Airbnb and things like that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis.
I mean, I get the operative term in that one is consider, but do we have data on how STRs are in the city?
We do not, STRs being short-term rental, but we do not because we don't regulate short-term rentals at all. So we do not have a means to collect that data. It's something, you know, we could do our best to collect retroactively if we were to, you know, build a data set to move forward with a policy.
And we do, I mean, if you just go onto Airbnb, you can see, and there's probably, you know, somewhere on a dozen, you know, less than a dozen of them right now, but there are, there are more and more, there are more than, they definitely have increased over the past two, three years, they've increased. Of course, and the more that we have that draws people as a destination, the more of them that there will be.
Is that sort of, would that be discouraging business in a certain sense?
It's a great question. And the, the reason that comes up, and it comes up at a state level a lot as well, is that the, when you have short-term rentals, then an opportunity for what would be considered as a possibility for affordable housing is no longer. Because instead of, instead of a cottage that a family can live in and it's affordable, it's a cottage that's rented out as an Airbnb. And then the price per night is not something that would be affordable for a family to live in during the month. So they look at it as a potential decrease in affordable housing opportunities.
I, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of, I'm mixed on this one because if you have an Airbnb, having someone come and rent that for a month, you're not, that's not the idea of it. And people really aren't in favor of that. And I would hate to implement a policy and stuff like sorting people when there was no issue really to begin with.
Thus the consider. And that it's on a policy level. Now, if it is something that like, to be fair, the council, city council in Ridgefield, when the council has been asked, do you want to look at a policy to regulate short-term rentals? The answer has been no up to this point. We're looking at a 20-year plan, looking out forward 20 years. So the question that we're really asking you isn't what you would regulate or how. The question is, do you think over the next 20 years that a council should, should consider regulating them? And if you say, no, I don't think that they should even consider it over the next 20 years, I just don't think it's worth doing, then we take it off. If you think maybe, I don't know, not now, but maybe next year, that's. So that's the question for you guys.
Do HOAs, don't they, I think the HOA I live doesn't allow short-term though.
Certainly, communities with HOAs have different restrictions associated with that.
Yeah, and I guess it's, again, the operative word for two-four and two-two is consider. So then I ask about two-three and it says provide. So to me, I'm reading that as, if we go forward to that with two-three, we are binding ourselves, future councils, to provide incentives for affordable housing. And I'm not saying I'm against that, I'm just clarifying that we aren't using the term consider. We're using the term provide and are we comfortable with that?
Well, I would say to that, like, it's like, provide, yes, you know, but that's not, that's not prescribing what exactly, what the kind of incentives would be provided. And I think it's worth exploring what those incentives would be. And even I would, apart from say separate, have a policy discussion on that. That would be something you even look at, like, do you do that? Like we did with the, I'm going to butcher this, but it was the, the license tab renewal fees we did. You know, that was for a period of time, right? So like, we'd say for a period of five years or for 10 years, whatever, we're going to look at incentive that might have impact fee waivers or REIT waivers or something like that, that would help us incentivize more affordable types of housing.
Yeah, but I mean, that is going to bind us to do something. And I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just wanting to acknowledge that if, if we go with this language, we are saying we're going to do something, whether it's impact fee waivers, deferrals, bonuses.
You think it should say consider providing incentives?
I'm not saying I think it should, I'm just pointing out that there's a difference between consider and the verbiage that's in there now. And making sure that we're comfortable with that. So there's a reason for that, that we have to have an outcome. That's the reason, is that you have to have an outcome. Is that for affordable housing, if you are going to actually provide for affordable housing options for different income strata, unless you just want it to be colors on the map and not real, then there have to be incentives provided to, to get housing at those levels because anything, I mean, anything below 60% of median income, and I might say even higher than that, you're not affording a place in Ridgefield unless we create incentives. So if you want a plan that's real in saying, yes, we are going to provide for these different income strata, that's why it says provide incentives. Now, it doesn't say what they have to be, but it's a recognition of the reality that many don't want to talk about. And that in your conversations about others who may be not dealing with the reality of things and just trying to run out the clock, it is you saying, yeah, if we think affordable housing for those income strata is important, there has to be incentives. We don't know what they're going to be, but they need to be provided. That's why that's different.
I really, Counselor Davis, I look at this as like when we talk about building our community for future generations to reap the benefits of, this is something that I see. Our children are going to grow up, if they want to stay in Ridgefield and raise their families, we can set them up with this ability to have pockets of housing that they can afford to stay in Ridgefield where they have grown up their entire life and want to raise their families here. I think this whole conversation gets people a little, not in this room, but outside, like, oh my gosh, all this affordable housing. But I think we look at the worst case of what's happening in surrounding areas and what they have happening with affordable housing and know that you can have affordable housing and you're not going to look like others.
No, I, I, I mean, I'm not arguing that at all. I just wanted to shine a light on that word has a commitment attached to it.
Right, so I guess what I, what I have to know is, are we going to hash out what, like, what the such as actually is before we adopt this as a policy? Or do we have to adopt this as a policy and then figure it out? You can do it either way. Certainly, the general way that you do these types of plans, you don't hash it out ahead of time because you also don't know what the tools will be. Is that this is a 20-year plan, so you're developing these policies for the next 20 years. And we have no idea what, what tools we will have as a jurisdiction to actually provide for affordable housing. So that's usually why you just keep it really broad and you say, all right, well, we're going to have, we're going to actually have some tools, we're going to incentivize, but we don't know what they're going to be yet. Yeah, well, I guess the reason why I say that is because a lot of these incentives, especially for local governments, are potentially pretty controversial when you talk about like REIT waivers, housing trusts or rent, rent control, all those types of things. I mean, you're going to have some really good debate around those and I think there's some really good, good options in there. But the last thing I want to do is say, yeah, we're going to do this and then like not have a solution behind it. And next thing you know, we get a letter from Commerce with a, a letter of non-compliance or something like that, saying that we're not following through on our. They wouldn't, they wouldn't care. They'd be fine with it, but you may care.
Could we work plans, they consider providing incentives?
Well, that's the whole point is I think it sounds like we need to, I think we need to say provide in order to, you know, get it to compliance. And I think that such as is appropriate because it's just providing examples. And it's not even providing examples that are the most controversial tools out there and acknowledging that. I mean, with the legislature, those tools could change from session to session.
All right, thank you.
So the last proposed housing goal is around accessibility and in use policies, draft policies. We're looking at accessibility in terms of senior living, universal design, minimizing barriers to creating housing that is equitable and accessible to different populations. Happy to take any questions or comments.
Is it really possible to treat people of special needs equally knowing that they have to have special equipment in their homes? And is that saying, make sure you have a house you can live in where you can get your daughter up in a wheelchair and that you can wheel your wheelchair into the shower? Like, is that?
Really good question, it's the difference between equality and equity, right? Is that the difference between equality and equity is that equality is you treat everybody the same. And there's always that great picture of equality and they show people looking at the wall, looking over a fence. And equality is everybody standing on the same level and some people can see over the fence and some people can't. Equity is when you give everybody where their heads are all at the same level and they have boxes of different sizes so that they can all see over that fence. So this may be more equity than equality where there may be provisions that are necessary for different segments of the population that, that they are then, that is equitable as opposed to equal. So that, that, I mean, certainly that is the council's purview on this policy, but, but that's a very good point. Counselor Davis.
I mean, I would just like speak out on 5.33. I mean, I am a big fan of universal design.
Universal design, um, I, once upon a time, wrote an article on. Um, and the best part of it is just that it fits for everybody and it opens your eyes to you can create. You know, these these homes that it it doesn't look like a. Clinical hospital environment, you know what I mean? A lot of people think that's what it would look like and it's just, no, it's like wider doorway. And it's, you know, some kind of heights and and things of that nature and so. I am a big fan of that being, and I like the word, it's promoting, not requiring. You know, things of that nature, but I think promoting that, um, you know, um. Mr. Green knows better than all of us about, you know, the the impacts of on our community, that, you know, our aging population. Um, or the needs of our aging population are gonna have on our communities. Um, and to be clear, that's because of the committee he served on.
Not not just. Not because he's retiring, but uh because of the service on the Commission on Aging and Leadership of the Commission on Aging. Thank you for clarifying.
Happy to help.
Yeah, uh, you know, I I just, I I really am a big believer in that, so, um, yeah, I I love that maybe.
Is is that a broad term, senior living communities, like like I like, you know, is that like fifty five plus? Communities or it like, it's not just what we classify as.
It's a relatively broad swath of opportunities and options.
Gotcha, Councilor Burkle.
Wouldn't ADUs cover a part of this? What, people I know with ADUs have them to accommodate a senior member of their family. And also a comment, about thirteen percent of the residents in Ridgefield are over sixty years old.
What percentage?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Great point, as far as the ADUs, because certainly, you know, that you know, that is. One of the key reasons that people will develop ADUs, so that is something definitely can add to this.
And I think that could hold in as an implementation item for five point three point four, which has to do with housing options. Um, I think that definitely is overlap with the the variety goal, so fun. This may not, when I think of senior living communities, one of the biggest issues is that we have so many. Grandparents in the community raising grandchildren. And they cannot afford to maintain their housing because they're on a six income and now they're raising children. And I would really love to see that if we have a senior living community that either in visits down in the weeds, I understand that, but. Having a few units that are multiple bedrooms within that where they're allowed to have, you know, up to two children or in the age of twenty one. Also residing in the home, so that they feel like they can still continue to secure housing, but also not feel like. They're out of options on a six income while they're raising family members.
Councilor, any other questions or thoughts on this uh, this goal? Okay, I think we can move on.
Thank you so much.
Hey, this is the last segment of the study session this evening, just as a time check, we are just before six P M. Um, we still have a little bit of time, I wanted to make sure we're okay as far as time, we do not have to end, they don't lock us in or. Shut the lights off at six, uh, so we could stay here for a little bit longer if that works for you all, but. And do you want to take just a few minutes to take a little break before we do this last?
Council, maybe like a five minute break, five, five minutes enough or ten minutes? Five, okay, well, we'll uh, we'll come back in five minutes then.
Thank you.
We're back from our break, so we're gonna resume on the economic development portion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So I will lead us through this part of the presentation. We do have Todd Chase from FCS as our consultant has been working with us on the economic development element of the con plan. But wanted to walk through this with you. Get to that. Okay, again, what we're talking about here this evening is we're talking about policies and plans associated with an economic development element of our comprehensive plan. With all of these, the housing conversation, the land conversation, economic development, these are all chapters in the plan that you will ultimately be asked to consider and adopt that sets the vision for the next 20 years. Economic development has not always been a required element of a con plan. It was actually added in the early 2000s along with parks and recreation. And the reason was is a lot of communities were already doing the work. So a lot of the cities and counties said, well, we should actually memorialize that. We should have some plans and policy that drive our economic development activities. So thus it was integrated into requirements of GMA in the early 2000s. So for us, existing conditions in Ridgefield, Ridgefield's employment has increased from 1,247 jobs in 2010 to almost 2,600 jobs in 2021, seeing a rate of increase of just under 7% per year. Again, these numbers, the last numbers we have are 2021, so they're a little bit dated on that. So some of the larger transitional employment pieces have not been captured within these numbers. Other information on there, you can already see, the bottom one is important and it's low. The number, it says 16% of employed Ridgefield residents work from home. That 16% is actually that census data, that is more generalized data. It is not the specific data that we have been capturing in the community survey that we did and is not what we anticipate is more relative and relevant for Ridgefield post COVID. Our expectation and what we've seen is somewhere between 20 and 25%.
20 and 25% work from home? Wow, okay. What is a good, regarding that, the annual rate at 6.7 of jobs? What is a good benchmark for that? Like, give me, give me a baseline there. Is that good? Is that?
Growing is good, always. So growing is good, for sure. But when you're looking at the growth rate for jobs, what we generally related to is the growth related to housing. Because what you want is you want jobs and housing to be growing together so that you have opportunities for employment in the place you live. So that's why when we look at jobs to housing ratios, you want your ratio to get better over time. You want more jobs per household over time. So you actually want to see a higher percentage of job growth than that because our, our housing growth has been closer to 8%, if I'm remembering right. So we have, you know, so there's a little catch up. But again, 2021 was the beginning of that transition that we've had from residentially dependent to full-service community with a balance of jobs and housing. So we're starting to see that transition occur, but that's what, when we look at the next 20 years and thinking about those policies, a lot of it is to really continue that transition and get job growth ahead of housing growth.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see what the numbers are more closer to like 23 and 24, like what that looks like. Cause that's where we started to see some commercial development really come online.
We can dig around a little bit, see what we might be able to add to those numbers.
Yeah, Councilor Wells.
You stole my thunder.
Sorry.
Yeah, we can certainly work on that. Mr. Johnson, definitely. Mr. Johnson's in the back there, our budget finance director. We can definitely work to see if we can get some updated figures for you.
Councilor Burkle.
Our employee residents who work from home, are we on average at say 25% with everybody or are we above, below, or do we know?
So and again, the 16% is what we could prove through census data and that is like, that is solid, is solid floor. Again, what we have seen through the work we've done in our community is that it is closer to 20%. It is, the percent is not something traditionally that has been part of a policy to embrace and to attract. It has been just a recognition that there are a few people that work from home. Historically, the county has actually, in their planning assumptions, used 4% in their planning assumptions. And actually said their assumption was that 4% of people were working from home. Now, we know that that's not true. We know that even before COVID, it probably wasn't true and post-COVID, it's absolutely not true. So there is a recalculation of the baseline that's occurring nationally and at county level. For us, the question for you all is, what is the percentage that makes sense for this community and what you see? And how might we help with that? And we'll get into that in just a little bit here because that is a great question of, what's the right percentage? And that, that's policy. That's a great question for you guys to, to really think through.
Any other questions before we move on?
Yeah, just are residents working from home required to have the business license? Or is that dependent on what they do?
So they are, if they have a business, they're required to have a business license. It's how we know that we have more home-based businesses and people working from home than the baseline indicates. Because when we get the monthly new business report, it was one of the first real indicators for us internally and that as we spoke with the council, to know that we had more people working from home. Because for quite some number of years, I'm looking at Mr. Johnson, when did we go with a state on business licenses? Okay, so in 2019, we partnered with the state so that if you are a small business owner and you have a business where you're an accountant and you're working out of your house and you're an accountant, you have to have a state business license. When you get your state business license, it automatically by your address then gets you a Ridgefield business license. And we did that started in 2019 because we really had a lot of businesses that we didn't know existed until that point. We had a requirement to have a Ridgefield business license, but a lot of people didn't have it because they didn't know they needed it. So now, every time we get one of those folks that is working from home, they have, you know, they're an accountant, they're anything, but they are just working from their house, they'll have a business license. And if they have a state business license, they have a Ridgefield business license. And then every month, when we do a new business report, every month, it's 20 or 30 new businesses that are home, that are, their address is their house. And like home office, home office, home office. It's just every month we see that.
But many, many people work from home that aren't business owners.
Correct. And that's the other piece of it. So one piece of it is home-based businesses. The other is employees who are just working from home and they work for other employers. When we did the community survey to ask people, do you work from home? We asked them the question, are you working for a business that is your own business or is in, or is it a business that's outside of Ridgefield? And there was a strong majority that were working for businesses that were outside of Ridgefield, but just were working from home. And we had, my memory serves, we had over 500 residents respond that they were working from home. And that was just in a single survey that we did. So when we talk about 867 working from home, we had 500 that just answered a single survey saying that they work from home. So that's how we know, but that's love. Are we getting dead more than work from home? We are, absolutely are. If you're, yeah, we can get to that. This is just the existing conditions kind of recognition of the lay of the land.
Yeah, let's get into it.
So, and then this is the numeric value of what we're seeking. This is the, what is good as far as a growth rate, right? So when we look at it, there's a lot of different numbers on the screen here. The county is projecting that the Ridgefield UGA will need to accommodate just under 9,400 net new jobs by 2045. So that is like to actually have that full-service community, that is the projection. After you adjust for home-based businesses, Ridgefield UGA is adequate to accommodate that number. However, that number, that 9,375 is not the same as housing. In housing, they allocate you a number of units and they said, you must take these. You have a choice. And there's a percent, they, county doesn't have a complete choice. The county council gets a number based on a lot of their assumptions that they allocate across all the jurisdictions. So they have to do that with housing. With jobs, it's not the same. For jobs, they can pick a number. They could say, we want one job for every household. Okay, how many acres do we need to do that? Or they could say, we want one job for every two people, which is even more jobs because every household is like 2.67 people. And every, you know, one per two, that's, that's more jobs. They can determine that. They can decide that. So when the county looked at, this is how many jobs we think we need. That's their number. That doesn't mean it needs to be your number. So if you're looking at like a vision for jobs, historically, one of the questions that has been asked and that I will ask you right now is, what is best case for you? Like, there's lots of ways to skin it. Is it one job for every two people? Meaning every, you know, every couple that's in a, you know, every couple in a house. Is it one job per every household? Households, like I said, there's a little bit more. We assume, like in ours, we have 2.9 people for every household. So if we had one job for every household, that would be, we'd take the population, this is how many jobs and it's about a third for jobs versus people. That, that's the math we would do. But when you're thinking about it, like, what's the right metric for you? When you think about how many jobs, don't worry about where they are, what kinds they are right now. Tell me.
Okay, Council, thoughts? We can start hearing what's going on.
Let's, let's start somewhere else.
Okay.
You know, what I was coming up with, I guess I can say. Number of jobs per household, if you had, by the population per household, then mom and dad, the kids gotta work too.
Well, it's basically the same in Ridgefield. One of the people that lives in that house is gonna have a job in Ridgefield. And they, like, jobs per household is just a, you're right, it's kind of a weird metric because you're like, wait a minute, oh, you have kids. It's simply, it is just one way to skin it, that lots, that historically lots of jurisdictions abuse.
But historically, Ridgefield developed the industrial, I think that's probably industrial area, was to turn around and stop the commute to Oregon. They turned around and provide jobs here for people that live here to have jobs here and other people from Hazelwell or Vancouver to come to Ridgefield and have jobs. So the people, the state, so the figure of number of people for households is, is tough to.
You're answering the question though, sir. You're already, you're doing a great job answering the question. You're saying, I don't want somebody, we don't want them to have to commute across. Okay. So in a single income household, then that would be one per household. In a dual income household, which is a lot of us that have dual income households, that would be two per household to kind of meet that goal of them not having to commute out. So you're starting to get.
One in three quarters.
One in three quarters, Councilor Wells. Okay, Councilor Favella.
I just, it's unfortunate that we have less and less single family or single income families. I think realistically, if we're going to calculate realistic numbers, then it needs to be two incomes per house. I just do not see one income being realistic anywhere.
People that work in Ridgefield.
Yeah, exactly. So that's the difference. The difference is, so like in Ridgefield right now, you probably have like one job for every three and a half or four people, population. So like you, for you, you have a population of four for every one job, somewhere between three and four. Now, in Portland, it's two to one, like two people for every one job. In Clark County, generally over time, it's been like three people for every one job in the county. So for this, it's not that we're, we are anticipating a lot of dual income households. It's simply, how many of those are in Ridgefield?
Are you considering work from home in Ridgefield?
We'll get that, yeah. Absolutely. Yes.
I don't know, cause I don't know anybody who works here in Ridgefield.
Is there a way that we can just do the math on, like, we have 2, 2,500 jobs?
Yep.
And this many residents?
Yes.
Just plug the formula?
That is, and that's where, yes, that's where we'll get.
Yeah.
Like, so that's why I say on the policy level, for you guys, it's saying, what, what's, what is it that we're hoping to achieve? And then we do the math.
And I don't know if this is up now, it's a podcast that I just listened to recently that was the CEO of Zoom. And he was talking about how he required, he's required, he only lets people work from home too this week. Because I wrote the quote down, you cannot build trust without unionism. And so I, he was talking about the shift of people, less work from home as a possibility. Just to note, I don't know what the numbers are. I could be totally wrong, but that was top of mind. To me, that I think that work from home thing component is trick. In this estimation.
All right. Other thoughts on this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking maybe one, one and a half. I see the migration in and out of town, in the morning, in the afternoon, coming back. A lot of our residents do leave. So I, I would estimate maybe one, possibly, one maybe possibly one and a half. That might be high.
Okay, yeah. Here for Tim.
I think there's a lot of households that have zero people there. There's a lot of retired people that are there.
Councilor Davis.
I mean, I'm struggling to find a number. I, I guess my mind automatically goes towards, if we look at the cost of housing in Ridgefield right now, and we look at the, the bulk of the jobs outside of work from home, I think that in order to prioritize really the increase, we would also be in turn prioritizing bringing in some sort of employer that had a bulk of jobs that could afford to live in Ridgefield.
Oh, that's a good point.
And so if that's not what we are comfortable prioritizing, it then goes back to, okay, how are we gonna make the water warm for people that do work from home? You know, and I, I know I already talked about like the walkable communities piece and that fits for some people and not everything. But, you know, it is a very much a downhill thing in terms of prioritizing, you know, utility. You know, the dependability of, you know, internet, you know, it, it would influence our transportation systems and all that stuff. But when we talk about like the number, I don't know, I mean, my wife and I, we don't go into Oregon. I used to, but we leave Ridgefield, you know, and so we're a zero. We're in my house and like you spoke to, there's a lot of retired people. So I, I really struggle to find, I really, I really struggle to land at a number. But I feel like that any number, the, the, the bigger decision almost is, like, how are we gonna do it? Are we gonna really need to work from home and understanding what attracts that and accommodating that? Or are we gonna say we need to, for lack of a better way of putting it, land a big fish? Because I, I don't feel like there's a lot of jobs that aren't work from home that would allow you to afford to live in Ridgefield. So let's get to that because that's, that is the next piece of this, is that.
Oh.
Unless there's anything else on the baseline. I have what I need on that.
Okay.
So there are three basic areas of job growth that you have all been discussing as a council over the past months with staff. The first of which being the three kind of three-legged stool of job development would be mixed-use hubs, work from home, remote work, and larger industrial employers. All three, not just one. So the first one of these is goal 4.1 would be developing integrated, high-density mixed-use hubs that support housing and employment opportunities. I'll just leave this up here, take a look and we'd like to talk through those policies with you, with regards to that type of employment.
Is this for the hope that the people who are living in that home is also working?
Potentially, yeah. So it could be that. It could also be that mixed-use hubs have retail, commercial, they have office. So they have employment centers built into them. So walkability, the opportunity for people to live, work, play close, yes, part of it, but not necessarily. I mean, a lot of the people who work in Pioneer Village probably don't live in Assera.
Right.
Right, yes, yeah.
I made notes, so I'll read this one because I was afraid of. So 413. I think it's important to make sure we prioritize infrastructure investments aimed at making mixed-use hubs available and buildable. I would imagine, is there a policy that needs to be enacted for something that would encourage the builders to do something or we're planning that?
So those would be some of the implemented strategies that would be associated with the goal.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just think as we go forward, we're going to continue to see more and more people work from home.
We'll get to that one. Hold off on that. Just forgive me, but stay with the, the mixed-use piece. Are there areas on this that you would like to see changed, added to? Is this hitting the mark for kind of the mixed use? And such and such.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, now we get into the remote work opportunities. Now, council has had a lot of conversation, Councilor Hamilton, love that you're engaged with this piece now on it and looking up some of the data. Great, great that we're, you know, it is a rapidly evolving environment with that. However, in a lot of the conversations we've had with council, there's this recognition that we have this at least higher than average percentage of the population that works from home in Ridgefield. And the question was, what does council want to do about that? Do you want to just recognize it or just let it be? Do we want to recognize that as a component of our workforce? Because it isn't added in. When they tell us how many jobs we have at Ridgefield, most times you don't see remote work added into that. Now, the numbers that you saw, first off, we had to add in the remote work because it isn't in what you'll see from the census or otherwise. They don't do that for us. So it really is up to us to say, okay, is this a part of who we are and what we provide? And so the council has talked about what might we do to enhance those remote work opportunities as a component of working in Ridgefield. So these are what we tried to come up with to try to capture some of that conversation at the community and the council level. But we, we need your feedback on this.
Those, those jobs wouldn't count as Ridgefield jobs, right? If someone in Texas is paying your bills?
Nope, they count as our jobs.
They do, okay.
So they don't count. If you ask the census, do they count as a Texas job? They're a Texas job.
Yeah.
But the question is, where are they spending their money? Where are they spending their time? Where are they spending their energy? And when I say spending their money, the easy example is every time, and this was during and after COVID, you go to a large city, you go to Seattle, Portland, Washington DC. The, those cities were lamenting the high vacancy rates in commercial buildings. Where are all the employees? Because all of the services that support those offices were struggling without those employees. The, for Oregon employees, the Oregon employees who are employed in Oregon business but live in Washington, if you are working remotely and you don't spend your time in Oregon, you don't pay Oregon income tax. So then their income tax revenues were going down. So you get this, them lamenting. And the question that they asked was, where are they? The answer is Ridgefield. That's where they are. So when I look at this from my perspective as kind of your economic development manager, as one of the hats I wear, is that's our job because we have the employee, we have their revenue, we have their time, we have their energy here. I don't really care who writes the check or where that is. What I know is that employee is here. So we, we are, that's one of the questions of this is, how do we count it? Does that count? Because certainly, we know, we all know lots of people who are doing that.
I mean, I also get that in practice, I would agree. I guess if, if we're talking about being in alignment with a growth plan update, is that still, even if it's not the definition via census?
Sure, okay. I like the idea of, of this because, you know, not, like, one of the things that I, I think is really important is like, we don't just have jobs in Ridgefield, but we have quality jobs, like, you know, and we, like, I don't like to use words, living wage jobs because I don't even know what that means anymore. But, but having jobs like where there's, there's high school, you know, I, I think of like the software developer that lives on the block behind me, right? Like, there's, there's a ton of those types of people. Those are high school jobs, high paying jobs. That I, that I think that are, that if you can make Ridgefield places attractive, if it's like, hey, I wanna live in Ridgefield because I'm a remote worker and, and the city has created an attractive environment for me to come live, live and work there, be it remote. So I, I like that idea. Councilor Wells, you had.
Yeah, what I, I guess what I've got to say is, I talk about the old, old-time farmers. They had a vision for Ridgefield. I'm going back to that again. And the vision is, we need employment with, I'm talking about number one, second number one on Royal, up north. But we need to target the businesses that we're looking for. And the targeting of who comes that has a lot of employees. And we have businesses that are sitting here, and I'm gonna say Costco, there's a big employment there. Millplains or, the Millplains Electric, what's the other one right there?
Prairie.
Prairie Electric. And that's a targeted employment in the morning. It's like bees going into a bee hive, car after car after car. And there are all these jobs. So I'm, I'm back after the employment zone. We need to target employers that will bring employees and that benefit the community. And how the community benefits is the tax base for those buildings and that establishment. That's the reason. That's the reason we have the lowest tax rate in the county as far as the city itself. So because of, of the tax base that we have in our industry.
Are, are you saying bring companies here or bring workers here from the company?
Companies. And we'll get, the next slide, we will absolutely address that. Because of the three-legged stool, we already talked about the mixed-use hubs. This is remote work. The next slide is policies directly on point with what you're speaking to. So I wouldn't tell you, save that thought because we received it. We have that information, but we'll cover that. I promise you.
Okay, other, I had some, saw some other hands.
I'm just, I, as someone who does work from home, I do own my own business, but I also work for an agency. I've been there for over 15 years. I don't work from home for any of these reasons. I work from home. I don't work from home for any of these reasons. I work from home because. We are forced to be a two-two household income, and I also want to be a mom, and I want some flexibility, and I want to bring my kids to and from school. And I want to clean my house, and I want to cook dinner, but I also have to have money too. So I like that I'm always in Ridgefield, I spend all my money in Ridgefield, my home is in Ridgefield. But none of these things, if I'm being honest, were ever a consideration, because I just wanted to be at home, no matter where that was.
So let me pick at that just a little bit. So when you say. You always want to be home, you know, in Ridgefield, so access to your kids' schools. Pro- proximity to their schools, because you want to be in Ridgefield, they're in Ridgefield, or like. When you're talking about you want to be there for your kids, is that because their schools are close? I mean, so why Ridgefield then?
Because it's a safe community, because they have nothing to do with.
No, no, that's that's good.
It's a safe community, but I drive my kids, they don't take the bus, I don't, it's not. I knew when we came to Ridgefield, we were far away from everything, but I personally work from home, so it doesn't matter. And. When I leave the house, it's just to get them from school. But I don't, you know, if I'm just being honest, like, I love that we talk about wanting to have. Parks and communities, but I'm not utilizing any of that, because I'm busy working, and then when I'm off work, we're doing other things. You know what I'm saying? Like. When you're working, you're working. But, yeah, I think it's good to have something so that we can acknowledge that there are people in Ridgefield that work. From home and they're here all the time. But I also have a hard time seeing outside of my own reasons for working from home, if that makes sense.
No, that's good. I mean, as far as. So a couple of them on there. Do you have a home office? So design, home design that actually, incentive, you know, that actually promotes having dense offices. That's up there as a policy, because that does matter for you, because if you didn't have a home office, you'd be at the kitchen table or wherever, it worked for you, right? That's you, part of why you bought that house, and you're working from home, I'm assuming, and I shouldn't assume. Was when you were looking at that house, did it fit your needs as a family, but also as someone who needed space to work?
I think having an office was a plus, but even in my old, our old home previously, we just turned a guest that went into an office. Like, I figure out you just, you make it work with what.
You make it work, but if if there was a community designed around that, would that be more attractive if you were moving to the area? You're looking for a place to support remote work, right? Because you're saying, I want to do all these things. So wouldn't that be beneficial to have a community that was kind of designed around that versus having to make a spare bedroom work or kitchen table work? That's where I think the value is in this.
To be a part of it, you 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 work with what you have. And I don't think you can invent something that is gonna work for everybody. Like, if you don't have enough money to afford that, you're gonna make your. Little space work for you.
We're looking at policy level then.
Right, I understand that.
So and the other piece of that is like internet connectivity. In there are a lot of communities that have shoddy internet connectivity, and that makes it very hard to work from home, because you can't actually do the work you need. Um with it, so that's why we have that as, you know, business infrastructure such as broadband. Really making sure that that is a policy of having that. Does that resonate or no?
Kind of, when we were looking for our home, we did have a parameter that we had to stay in, making sure the Comcast was available. There were other areas that I would have moved to, but Comcast was not offered in those areas, so I couldn't have. Work from home would not be an option there, so then it kind of pulled us back to the parameter of where we need to be.
Perfect. Thank you for letting me pick at that a little bit. I appreciate it.
Counselor Davis.
Yeah, I mean, I I like a lot of this, just for one, I think that um by ignoring. This, we we're just sort of putting our heads in the sand, and because it's happening, it's happening at a high level, and. Um I I definitely understand um Counselor Vavella's uh, you know. Perspective on, you know, these aren't necessarily. You know, when you look at this list, it's not like, man, that's not the list that went through my head, but I think a lot of what you talked about, especially, did go to four point two two. You know, and and um, you know, th- there is a difference um in terms of, hey, you know, we did. You know, go out, you know, a- away from most things, but it's because it's it's a nice safe spot. And, you know, it's dependable, and, you know, it is walkable, and um so I I really like this. Um I I think that it's, I think it's the right level of being a little bit more broad, but also not being too broad and be. You know, allowing us to kind of create some goals and stuff like that, so I I do really like this.
And we can add, safety is a great component part, because what what we're really trying to get at, kind of on the attractive community, the. That four point two point two is really a broader quality of life. Because when you work remotely, you have a lot of choices for where you can work from. You can choose a lot of different communities that might have that broadband that you need, or different options, but where do I want my family to live? I want, you know, what kind of quality of life is going to attract my family, and then, oh, by the way, my employment. Because it comes along with on that. And so it is a recognition that we have a high quality of life in Ridgefield that draws people consistently. And with that comes opportunity, is kind of the way that it's flipping the script, instead of saying that. You bring the jobs to create quality of life, it's that your quality of life is creating the jobs. Well, and like. I'm hesitant to open this door, because I don't want us to go down this path that has almost kind of nothing to do with this, but it reminds me of something I read. Before, and it was about a city, you know, looking at data that showed a high percentage of their residents. Had um, you know, EVs, and so they were entertaining whether or not to have like EV charging. You know, capabilities as as a. No, no, as a standard in new builds, so that they could charge in their homes. Whether they want to have that as a standard, it's because of what that data showed, and I and so I think it's. It's a similar conversation of saying, we already have this happening, do we need to make, and and I think that. You know, by ignoring it. It, you know, we're not doing ourselves any favors, so understanding like dependability with utilities and, you know, access to PDS.
Uh real quick, counsel, I want to make sure everyone gets a chance to talk, and so if, you know, uh if you have something to say, well, we're calling you, so Counselor Burkle.
As I look at these, I think we're well on our way to accomplishing most everything that's there.
Counselor Hamilton, you have some.
Can you give me a clarification on number one, uh working with employers to promote residential options? It seems like. We're adding things to our plate that are separate issue, like, are we, we're we're doing big-time employers, smaller players. That are like advocates for Ridgefield and documents, like, what is that?
I appreciate you bringing that up, because that was the first one that like went through my mind too, when I was like conflicted. Like, I just, my job doesn't care where I live, like, what, they don't.
And that's kind of the point with remote work, right? Is that they don't care where you live necessarily, so why wouldn't we be working with them on that? It's a great point. It was more about, I think the purpose, the intent of it was like, would employers have a sense of. You know, the the kinds, you know, the kinds of residential options their employees would want, but your point is well taken that. And I think about in my own household, um that my, you know, for my spouse who works from home, like. Yeah, her employer wouldn't have a, wouldn't help, be helpful in that conversation.
And it's almost not that relationship, I mean, it's like, I mean, it depends on where you work, who you work for, but.
No, we could definitely get, if if there's.
The employer counts when they want flexibility for their employee, like, I'll let you one from home, do what you gotta do. But like, in terms of like, what what type of housing do you need? That's never, that's not a thing.
If that's, I'm, the sense that I'm getting, we just remove that policy. Yeah, it is sort of amorphous, and that may not be relevant.
Counselor Davis.
I mean, the way I read it, and I and I'm fine striking it, because I think that the way I read it is a little more of the. But I I read it as, you know, if we've got um say, say a company that's looking to relocate to Ridgefield. And they know a certain thing about um, you know, just sort of the culture of the company. And is that valuable data for us to consider? You know, maybe it's a, maybe it's a a young workforce, maybe it's a company that's currently in the Bay Area. You know, and it's it's young tech and and understanding maybe some of those needs, or maybe they have a like a a very veteran. You know, um established workforce, and it's like, no, we want, you know, single-level homes and, you know, stuff like that. And it's not saying that we would make policy changes to accommodate that, but we would have that understanding of. What kind of housing they're they're looking for.
I just, you know, like, we're asking the city then to create a policy that everyone does, and it's not.
Yeah, but who's implementing this at the company? Is it the HR function? Like, who is the person that works?
I think it's more of a data collection piece, is how I, yeah, we're not placing people. But I felt like it's more of a data collection piece, and if we want to strike it, then I don't have a huge problem, that's just how I interpret it.
Have we actually had employers ask about this?
No, and I think, and again. The wording is just definitely clumsy in that, and it definitely, it it comes up like promoting residential options. Employers to promote residential options is really beyond the scope of what we would do. Um and so it does, it really is kind of beyond scope and not relevant, to what you're saying, counselor, as far as. Um understanding, the bolded part about understanding the housing needs. If we as an employer at the city, one of the things that we did during COVID is we did an initial analysis of what is going to be necessary. To support our employees if they were going to be working remotely. And we knew, okay, well, we need to have internet access. You don't have it in your area? Okay, we need to figure out hotspots. Um like, what do we need to do to help you be successful? What are those things that you need to be able to work remotely? What tech do you need? What setup do you need? Um what support do you need? So there, so I think it comes from that place of kind of that data collection, but this isn't it.
Wildly thoughtful, assuming everyone's being wildly thoughtful about their employee, and I think that that's. It's not a core value, like, I think it's a very separate thing for a lot of people, and I think work from home people are work from home people. So they're gonna look for the house that fits their needs if they can afford it, and I think it's sort of funny that we're having such a horrible housing conversation, and then such a luxury. Like, how can we design this house to make sure that, you know, it's like.
Well, but that's the point, right? Is that in Ridgefield, if you want people, like, yes, we talk about affordability, but affordability is a sliding scale. Affordability is what can I afford? So when we have eight hundred thousand dollar homes, uh and people keep buying them. They are affordable to those people. What are those people doing? Are they doing jobs in Ridgefield at Dollar Tree? They're not. Uh so what what are they doing? What employment are they doing where they can afford it? A lot of that is the software designer that works behind it. It is these other types of employment. That traditionally may have been seen as somebody else's job, but it isn't. It is a Ridgefield job, because it is a Ridgefield person doing it. And those people made a choice to come to Ridgefield, and more and more of them are doing that. The question that when I was picking at it a little bit is, why is that? What is it about Ridgefield? And that's that quality of life piece, is those people are saying, this is a really nice community. I want to live in this community. Now, I need a setup that works for me, um and my employment, and so that's what we're trying to get with this. The the one that you're speaking to that goes beyond that. So, yeah, that's, I think, the wording, I think, was beyond the approach. So we can, we'll, we'll work with that. Marty, go ahead.
You've got an employer kind of on the edge, and they're like, hey, we've got a place to get rid of the battle room for in Ridgefield, one that's working to live in Ridgefield.
Yes.
So that's, I think that's another nuance to that policy, that if you've got, if you've got it off, you want people to live, you're living. Working on the edge, so spend time and money in Ridgefield rather than say battle room.
And it's true, but I think we'll address that in one of the other goals, when we're talking about the place-based employment. Because those are the place-based employers, that's when you want to talk to the employers, and we do, talk to the employers about, hey. What can we be doing to help your employees find a place to live here? Um and that goes to like, and I just mentioned Dollar Tree, like, how can we make sure there are places to live for the people who work at Dollar Tree? You know, that's the affordability question that you're speaking to, but that's place-based employment. We'll get to that in just a second here, so. So before we leave this.
Yeah, so looking at four point two two, uh. Uh you know, I I I think about like communities like Sanderling Park, which are building like their own community center at the middle of that development. It does the, it does that cover things like that, that could have a business center there, or maybe like kind of some different remote workstations or or work set up there? So you could work in community with others and encouraging that kind of stuff in our new developments? Or would we need to add something that has the kind of focus on things like that?
It would be a broader interpretation of that, I think, or broader language.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know. I I love the the thought when people say like, hmm, workplace, but like, I know what my job is. I could never work with other people, because. There are so many people that I just see that being a small pool of people that would actually use like a public.
Not, but for now, in the plan as you're moving forward, go back to your analysis of mixed-use hubs. When you're talking about mixed-use hubs, you have people in smaller spaces, you have people in apartments, in condos, in townhomes. But don't have the space that you have, that I have, they don't have those spaces. So one of the things that a lot of multifamily developers are starting. To talk about is instead of just having a weight room and uh and just a pool table in a community building for an apartment complex. But they are actually having shared workspace, they're having conference tables, and think of when you go to a hotel. This is already happened. This is not, this is not something that we are making up, is that. Every hotel has a business center. And that is what we are now seeing in multifamily developments, because of all the people that are doing remote work, but cannot. Remote work from the small space that they have, is that it isn't traditional, what we think of as co-work space and like co-ops and things like that. It's more, I need a conference room to actually do a conference call, and I need a screen, I need a table.
That makes more sense to me, the the cafe thing that does. Thank you.
Yeah, and I guess I'll piggyback on that too, and you know. I mean, I'm more of a fan of like, you know, what the what the, you know, free market kind of work its way, but. Um having that mindset and that knowledge as we work with developers. You know, you talk about Sanderling Park having that community center. Well, you know, they can kind of do what they want. It's up to them. They want to sell homes to be attractive. You know, there there's a lot, and and you might, in in your field. You know, like, I know people that work in the medical field that they have to have a lock on their door. I mean, is that for us to to create policy around? No, it's not, but it's valuable for us to be aware that there are those jobs. I think about a community center. You know, when when Claire's talking to somebody, being able to say, well, hey, you know. Like, there's a lot of employers around that, you know, they could use like more of a business center around here, or. Just ensuring that they're gonna have the infrastructure to be able to have dependable internet, so. You know, during the summer, if they have kids and they got a pool enjoying themselves, maybe there's an area there. Is it up to Sanderling Park to do that? That's on them. But as we're working with them to develop it, it's valuable information, I think, for us to have. When we're helping them arrive at what's a good solution for Ridgefield. Are we gonna dictate it? No. But I think knowing it and being able to facilitate even those conversations to arrive at maybe a better product, if that's where they land, is a valuable thing.
I think those opposite words are foster and encourage, right? Like, that's that's what it's about. It's not, it's not requiring it, but creating a place. If this can be a place where you can live and work.
Yeah, and just being aware that things have changed, and how do we keep ourselves aware of that?
Counsel, just because I want to be conscious of your time, if there, I want to make sure we get this, and then we will absolutely capture these thoughts and bring you back. A draft that hopefully captures some of these.
Any other questions or comments, counsel, before we move on to the next one?
Okay, okay. All right, then we have two more. This one is about. Where am I at here? Oh, this is regulatory. What's, yeah, this one we already talked about. This is, but take a look at this, this is really talking about more um supporting businesses. To create jobs at that ratio, uh and then we can look at, that's why I was picking at the the ratio. We've already talked about what that ratio might be, so I don't think we need to go there, but it's like, what are the kinds of things that we can be doing here at a general policy level? We've talked about a lot of coordination, monitoring, getting information, but take a look if there's anything that jumps off the page if you want that. And we'll get into the more specific employers, but.
I don't know, I'm still, I might, this might be my interpretation, I'm probably just gonna ask a question as I'm learning. Um what about working with commercial realtors, like the big, big guys that really know everything that's going on? Or surround with surrounding cities that know that their business is expanding to the point that they're gonna need more space? And we can utilize some of our more industrial areas and like target that more specifically to bring people in and bring actual jobs. Here, and then I, those people are gonna go to lunch while they're here, and they're gonna hopefully shop or do things like that, so I don't know if that's.
That makes perfect sense. No, not at all. I mean, so think about it, like, look at. That makes perfect sense. No, not at all. I mean, so think about it, like, look at four point three point six.
Yeah.
We're coordinating with project partners, including Porta, Bridgefield and CRDC. That would be a perfect place to add in and private partners, including commercial, no, commercial. Does that work happen? Yes. I talk to commercial brokers at least one a week, uh, on variety of different parcels around the city, um, just to stay coordinated with.
Yeah.
So, but it's a great, it is a good thing to have as a policy though. It's like, yeah, we're not just talking to our public sector partners, we're talking to private side partners as well. Because, yeah, it, that makes perfect sense.
And I think four point three point six is, is good for the previous slide as well, like working, because like CRDC is, that, that is one of their initiatives is, is to help create this as like a live and work community, like different pockets. And so working with them to develop kind of a holistic, um, effort around that, you know, versus employers coming here or just remote work coming here. I think it's, it's a good plan.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think one thing to, uh, what I go back to is, you know, and this goes back to our, our land use piece is, you know, we have finite land resources to consider. And so, you know, like I'd said kind of early on, I feel like we're, it, it's not exclusively one or the other. But it's like, if we are gonna try and land like a bigger fish like this, and I think bigger fish in, as someone that grew up in East Vancouver and I saw Camas for a while, you know, and so I'm, those are the sort of bigger fish I'm thinking about where it's like living wage jobs. Those people worked and lived in Camas. Um, that takes up a lot of land and that's then land that's not used for houses for, you know, work from home.
Yeah.
And so, um, that's kind of where I went back to like, it's sort of like a one or the other. And it's not exclusive one or the other, but it's like, where do we want, where we focus a lot of our, and.
And it depends on the year, like in the twenty sixteen plan, it was really focused on each subarea of the city has a different story to tell.
Yeah.
And it's because traditionally you can't make the land something it's not.
Yeah.
You can't make the waterfront a place for a large campus development. It doesn't fit. Um, you can't make Rose Hours fit downtown because they wouldn't come. Um, yes, but the, but the interchange, but the area, that subarea, the I five subarea that, you know, that we have, that's the one that we really focus on that type of development. And that is, is that the next one? Or are we downtown waterfront? Anything else on this? Cause I do want to touch on that.
Yeah.
So the two kind of like, hey, are the big fish that we have? The next one is downtown waterfront. So that's the next big thing, right? When you talk about prioritization of, you know, this is that, for many years, the economic development, uh, plan and strategy for implementation is that you would start where we did. At Royal and Pioneer. Why? Because it was community-sized and it would, it met a specific need of the community that already existed. We had the market for it. So you start at Pioneer and Royal, you build out from that. That would be first. Second would be the junction where we knew we would have a college, but you also knew you had access with I five. You had large, single ownership contiguous parcels. You knew that would happen once you started developing the market and you could show it. Because Costco wouldn't have come without Rose Hours. Because Costco needed to know that there was a marketplace within drive time as well as regionally. So, um, so that then was second. Third is waterfront, is the downtown waterfront. There is a master developer in place. They're just getting started on it. So, but this is kind of the, for downtown waterfront, not just the waterfront, but downtown waterfront. These are the things we don't want downtown left behind. It's our historic downtown. What can we be doing as the waterfront's developing to assure that there are historic downtown thrives? So that's what these are trying to get at. And we, we want to make sure we hit the mark on.
I think there needs to be some level of business recruitment or, or, or something like that right now. Because, because if I'm to be completely honest, I, I don't know that, that we as a community are doing a great job of attracting new types of businesses or, or downtown and the types, types of businesses that are emerging downtown are probably not necessarily what we would want to see here. Um, and so there, I think there has to be a component where we like, where there, I, and I don't, I don't know if it's the city's job or if it's just putting more, uh, placing like empowering Ridgefield Main Street or, or other programs or, or groups like that, partner with them closer together to, to do that recruitment effort to make sure that we can build out downtown. Because I think that the renaissance of downtown will, is really dependent on the types of businesses that are down here.
I agree. The one that sticks out to me is four, four, four. Uh, provide facade improvement grants for downtown businesses. I'm, I'm a little hesitant on that one, just because when you talk about a grant, that's money we give that doesn't get paid back. And whereas, and every single one of these buildings is privately owned. So it's taking public money. And is there a benefit to those buildings looking better from a community building perspective? Absolutely, absolutely. And I'm not saying I would want to, I, I would rather it be reframed as, you know, providing some sort of incentives for facade improvements. Um, I'm just hesitant on, on grants because, you know, we give a business fifty thousand bucks to improve the facade. And then two years later, they sell the building and they get a heck of a lot more. Well, we're not getting any of that equity than it is billed.
Didn't they go and change it, like, uh, contained it to look completely different? And out of what we envision our historical downtown Ridgefield to look like, and then we just paid them to their house.
I just feel there's other, I, I agree, but there's other, I, I would want to entertain other tools, I guess is what.
Is the, like a facade improvement grant, that's something that Regional Main Street does, correct?
Currently, yes.
Yes, like as a, as a program they do that they, I, yeah, I.
So as a policy for here, maybe.
But that's our, that's not city then.
Well, yeah, I, I, I would say four, four, four is, is too narrow. Yeah, I, I, I'd almost say it needs to be more of a downtown beautification thing. So we can say facade improvement grants, that's fine. But I think there is a role that the city does have on that. And that role looks like what, you know, making sure that our downtown feels safe and approachable, like good sidewalks, great lighting. Um, what are we gonna do with park laundry site? Like, like all those types of things where I think that, um, that there's opportunities there. I, I think we need to do more than just wait for the next developer to come and say, yeah, I'll do that. Or the next, uh, you know, the next business that nobody wants here, you know, and we get blows up our inboxes with, uh, says, well, we'll take up the space, right? That thinks there means, needs to be more business recruitment and more of a beautification effort in downtown to make it attractive to, to get, to bring people here.
I, I agree. I just don't want to do that narrow on that.
The facade and the feeling of that business, like that, that's a drastic improvement to that business owner. That getting investment in that and changing the lives. So we're changing lives of people that are doing work in our city. So I think I don't have a problem with a grant being put in there because I think that it's all, it's all, what's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Yeah, I, I think, yes, I agree. I think that and a host of other things.
Yeah.
Counselor Burple, you.
I was just gonna say that, you know, downtown, like it or not, it's what brings a lot of people to Ridgefield. It's the uniqueness. It's not the same building over and over and over and over, the same color, block after block. It's the uniqueness of, I think we have to be very, very careful what we decide to do in downtown Ridgefield. I think we could really screw it up if we start going through and telling everybody, well, you're gonna change the front of your, we're gonna, no. Leave it like it is. Don't screw it up.
No, this is good. I, keep on, sorry.
I think you could have language within there. Like, it's not like just a blanket thing that you get to do whatever you want. We can put regulation and language and things like that to make sure they're hitting standards.
And we do, we have, I mean, we have downtown design standards. We definitely have some of that. From a policy level, that uniqueness, that becomes the policy level. And it's not really addressed very well. So it's something that we can add in there of like, what are those types of things that, that, you know, create that enhancement for the business owner? Uh, and for the people, uh, of downtown and keep bringing them. And what are, what is that uniqueness quality? We can build that in.
You know, just a further comment, I'm really concerned about what happens with the recently created property on Main Street. I do not, personally do not want to say, I think we have policies that would correct it. A beautiful aluminum and glass building. We need definitely something that fits downtown. But that information should be seen, but it has to be part of what's there.
Hmm.
Okay.
I like, I'm thinking of a specific business that came into town because the owners needed to get the other business people out because they didn't have the money or the, the dedicated to fixing what needed to be fixed in that building. And maybe using some of that to not just the outside, but the inside. Like if you need help with something inside to maintain this good business that you have here, maybe we can look at that. And then we can prevent issues.
You know, we just had a new business open the other day, Corribington. She has a business in Astoria, selected Ridgefield and downtown Ridgefield of all places.
Yeah.
Because she liked everything about it. Thank God she's here.
Yeah, yeah, this is excellent. Thank you very much. Last one, promise.
You promise?
Promise.
Serious.
I do promise. I know you have promised, long past I said you were gonna be here. I very, very much appreciate it. But this is an amazingly good discussion. Like for us, this is gold because we are getting so much out of this. Um, the last one is what you've already talked some about. And that is, what can we do to facilitate large employer job development? It's what many of you have already discussed. Think I five interchange, you know, that, that area, that subarea of the city where we have those large, single ownership contiguous parcels, uh, around Clark College. We have some of the best and most of those in the county. So these are policies to try to get it. What are you gonna do with that? What, what are you gonna do about that? What are those policies? So take, take a look and that's what we're trying to capture here.
Again, is there an element of business recruitment here or kind of targeting types of businesses, you know, as, as we look at that, you know, um, do we, I, you know, that we, we said we don't want more industrial or, or warehouse, uh, type of employment because it doesn't, doesn't provide enough employment and, you know, it's not attractive to people who live here. What kinds of things could we be targeting, I think, that would, that would do that? Because if we can, if a Walmart came here right now, would we, would we like excited about that because we already have Costco or, you know, or like just the redundancy, you know, or just.
So that's not something we've done in the past, but it is something that could be a policy is creating like, identify and, and seek to attract target sectors. Uh, now who those target sectors are, that's not policy level. That's weeds. That's, we would get to that.
Yeah.
That would be implementation, but if it's something that you would like to further develop, that is work. I mean, it's work that CRDC does, it's work that we have partners that can help us with, if that is something that, that you are seeking.
What, what, what are the new evolving?
That, we'll get there. We'll get, that's what I'm saying. That's the next step. The first step is, do you care, uh, about what the sector?
That's like when I was talking, like, do you wanna, do we wanna go for one of these? Or do we wanna, do we wanna strike out, you know, four or five two? And say, no, we want to do houses in order to attract more work from home. You know what I'm saying? Like, I like the idea of doing both. Like, I like the idea of still going for a big fish because we're gonna have the work from home folk as it is. And I think we're still focused on that. But, you know, if we're gonna go all in on work from home, we would then have to have a problem with four or five two.
Well, didn't they do that?
We have lots of land.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the thing. You don't have to, you don't have to choose. Because again, in the employment zones, you have large, single ownership contiguous parcels that in your map that you're looking at are not changing, are not going to mixed-use environments. Plenty, lots of acreage to get those big fish.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
I, yeah, I was hoping it is that about contentionality. And so this feels like this is an intentional purpose.
Right.
Yeah, I like it. I like everything.
Actually, I think I like all four of those.
But being more intentional about sector development.
Yeah.
An easy example, then you asked like what kinds? We're already doing some of that in working to attract the regional criminal justice training center. That is a large employer. It is a specific sector that is associated with public safety. Uh, so you're already, you already have one. We already did Clark College. That was education that we did with an advanced manufacturing, uh, edge to it that potentially creates attractions for other types of sectors that would be, um, that would be able to leverage the training opportunities at Clark College. We have the beginnings of it. It just, it would take more, it takes more development. It just takes more work.
Has Keith helped come forward about the property that they own and have owned for very long that they forget that they own?
Yeah, so they have come. And then every three years they come again.
Right.
And they say, hey, we just found out we have property in Ridgefield. And then they get a new person. We literally do this about every three years. They get a new CEO and the new people and they come in and they ask me about this property that they own in Ridgefield. It is groundhogged. So there is not a sense, an overarching sense of vision for that property at this point.
Where is that property?
Just, it's between the fire station and the highway. So like, and just north of the, uh, Country Cafe. So from Country Cafe north, that whole property. Okay, anything else on this one?
I, I just got a little something to say. And then it is, they did a study for lands for jobs in the, in the, uh, six, seven years ago. We worked with CRDC, Ridgefield had, I think, four of the major parcels that qualified under that. I don't see any movement from CRDC. Maybe we do see, but of anything coming out of them.
Not yet. There is more work that needs to be done, for sure.
That, that, I just fell off the river.
Fair enough. Okay.
Okay.
Last slide, next steps. Um, proceed with the preferred land use alternative. We talked about the map. Was, this is just next, this isn't new. I'm just updating quickly. Um, so we already worked on the map. We're good. On that is we will get you an updated draft to have you look at. Same thing with the land use element, uh, that's associated with the map. We will bring you back based on what we heard. Um, outreach. So on the outreach for economic development, one of the things that we would like to do is go to private and public partners and say, okay, here's what we heard from council. Here's this amended draft. Get some comments back from them. Uh, just get feedback that we can bring back to, to say, did we hit the marks on these things? Same thing with the residential building development community for the housing element. Are, you know, are these policies resonating with our private sector partners? And then after that, we come back and we will be finalizing those housing economic development goals and policies for planning commission, then you. Same thing for, uh, the, uh, planning, say again? Goals and policies first, then the whole else. So that's our process moving forward. Any last questions on next steps or anything for us before we let you get out of here? Thank you, thank you. This is great stuff. For us, the staff and consultants, this conversation has been perfect for what we are looking and creating a vision for the community that's your vision, the community session.
I know. This day session is adjourned.